Everyone, welcome to the April 22nd Select Board Meeting. This meeting is called to order at 6:30 PM. And per usual, we start our meeting with public comment. Does anyone have any public comment to offer this evening? Please come forward.
Melissa Puratt for Precinct One. I believe this evening you are going to be considering the Articles 31, 32, and 33. And I would like to comment on those. And I'd like first to say that these are attempts to rezone North Amherst again. And I believe, Mr. Musante, you said at the end of the last town meeting that there'd be no more rezoning of the villages until we had a housing market survey, which we've been waiting for in the hope that it would, in fact, identify places in the town that were suitable for densification for student housing. We don't have that. And we were told in February that North Amherst was not going to be rezoned and was taken off the agenda and reappeared in these articles in late February, I think, maybe early March. We have not had time to either understand the implications and the impact that these articles are going to have on our neighborhood. I've tried to get information from the Planning Board about the number of residential units that could be placed on the comm property now with the new dimensions and so forth. And they are unable to do so. And I think, given that fact, that we can't have a reasonable idea of what is going to occur there, that these are not ready for public discernment as to their appropriateness for the area. The one, the other two efforts at rezoning were made, comm was, we were told, was not appropriate for a village center. And so they wanted to rezone it. The thing is that that is not the village center. The village center lies south of the river where the post office, the library, the bank, the pizza house, laundry, all of those few amenities lie south of the river. And north of the river is actually connected to the rural part of the town, well, the rural area beyond it and its RN up Montevue Road. So I know you're anxious to densify in the village centers, and we would welcome density in our village center south of the Mill River. We do not welcome it north of the river, especially when we can't learn what effect that's going to have on traffic, noise, the number of occupants. It's all seems to be unable to be determined at this point. So I don't think it's ready for our discernment. And I would ask you not to rubber stamp this, these three articles that relate to our neighborhood.
Thank you very much. Anyone else like to make public comment this evening? All right, then we will deal with a couple of untimed items before we get to our 6:45 timed item. Let's see, the first one is the, "To Extend the Land Development Agreement with HAP for Olympia Oaks." We talked about this at our last meeting. This is kind of a technicality that we have to go through to keep the process moving with Olympia Oaks. I have to ask folks if conversations could happen in the hallway, please. Excuse me, conversations need to happen in the hallway, not during our meeting. Okay, so the land development agreement with HAP for Olympia Oaks. So this is, as I said, a technicality. Ms. Stein, would you like to read the motion?
Sure. "I move that the Select Board authorize the extension of the land development agreement between the town and HAP Incorporated from June 30th, 2013 to August 30th, 2013, to allow parties additional time to satisfy the preconditions to enter into the lease for the Olympia Drive property."
Second.
Further discussion. Ms. Brewer.
I just wanted to reassure the public that nothing has gone wrong in this process. It's simply a delay, as is very typical in, as the processing happens at the various different state agencies. So things are proceeding apace. We just need a little extra time on this particular aspect of the agreement.
Thank you. Further comment? All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, that is unanimous. All right, next up, we have the, "Announce the DCR interest in Southeast Street property acquisition and consider request to reduce notice period." So this is information in our packets. This is also a technicality. Essentially, because the state is interested in potentially acquiring the land on Southeast Street, that is one of the articles on our town meeting warrant, they need to make that, that announcement needs to be made in public by the Select Board. And they have also requested a waiver or a shortening of the 120-day requirement period for, for their notice. This is something that we have dealt with before. Typically, we just say, yes, fine, no problem. There was one time recently when the state was interested in a property on Fearing Street, and we opted not to approve the shortening of the notice period because we didn't have enough clarity on the information. So that was a, there was a lot of concern about what was going on with that property. So we did not agree to shorten the waiver period. At this point, I think really it just is a technicality. I don't know if anyone would have any concerns about this, but I think that, I think that considering that this whole thing is moving forward with a, with a deliberative process through town meeting, that there's not any reason for us to oppose it. Mr. Hayden?
Yeah, the-
Please speak into your mic.
The material that we have didn't include a minimum time for notifications. It's asking us to relax the maximum time, but it doesn't, doesn't give us any idea of what, how far they want it to be relaxed. Is it 36 hours or is it four days? I don't know, I don't have a real problem with that, but it just seems to me a deficiency in what we're being asked to-
Okay. Mr. Zomeck, is that anything you can speak to? I was sort of assuming that the notice period essentially starts now and goes till whenever it needs to go.
Yes, that's actually correct. So just to slightly modify something Ms. O'Keefe said, this, the state has to do this anytime they're expressing an interest in purchasing any interest in land, whether it be fee interest or purchasing development rights. In this case, as you may recall, and in the lead-up to town meeting, this will be well articulated, but the CPAC is moving forward under the assumption that the Kestrel Land Trust, the town, if town meeting votes to approve funds from the CPA, and the state through DCR and private funding will all come together to purchase that seven plus or minus acres off of Southeast Street. So the state is essentially saying, "We need time before a summer closing," and it would be beneficial for the state to say, "The clock starts now." So there is no minimum because they would like it to start, if you're so inclined to vote on it now, to have the state clock start essentially now, and so they can proceed with their due diligence.
Right, so does that answer your question? So that it doesn't, the clock doesn't stop until whenever it needs to stop?
We're not waiting four months for it to start. We're starting it now. Okay.
Correct.
Correct. Because if all goes well, there would be a summer closing, and they need to start their process now, not 120 days from now.
Ms. Brewer.
I just wanted to verify my understanding that although this is all supposed to come together in a piece, that by us voting this, and even though it says hereby approves the acquisition, this does not tie our hands associated with the town meeting article. And whether the Select Board recommends or doesn't recommend the town meeting article, and town meeting recommends or doesn't recommend payment, this can proceed irrespective of that. And it's not like DCR is going to come back to us and say, "Oh, you said." This is just a separate piece that they have to go through.
Yeah, it's a separate piece, a formality that they have to go through to notice the town, but whatever vote the Select Board takes or town meeting takes is separate track.
Great, thank you.
Related, but separate.
Right. And so I can just quickly read the paragraphs in the letter so that it's a nice and official announcement. "Keeping with the provisions of 301 CMR 51.00, we would like to inform you that the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, acting through its Department of Conservation and Recreation, DCR, has under consideration the acquisition of approximately 5.44 plus or minus acres of land or other property interests therein in the town of Amherst. The property is currently used as undeveloped, unmanaged hayfield. The proposed use for the property will be land managed for protection of natural resources, including rare species, habitat, and a vernal pool, and include public access for passive outdoor recreation purposes. The property is adjacent to the Norwattick Rail Trail. Enclosed is a locust map marked Exhibit A, which shows the property in which we are interested in." So that's what we're talking about. Ms. Hayden?
So the answer to my question is zero, and that's okay, too.
All right, any other questions then about this? So we've made the announcement duly noted, and now the question of, of shortening the waiver period. I think we've addressed concerns about that, and everyone's good. So Ms. Stein.
Okay, I move the following. Pursuant to the Massachusetts General Laws and 301 CMR 51.00 at SEC, the Amherst Select Board hereby agrees to waive the 120-day notice period and do hereby approve the acquisition by the Department of Conservation and Recreation of approximately 5.44 plus or minus acres of land or other property interests in the town of Amherst in less than 120 days.
Second.
Further discussion. Ms. Hayden?
I'm just, just reading the motion, the form, it's, oh, I got it, I figured it out.
Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that is unanimous. Okay, let's do a couple of quick things. We have a taxi license.
I move that the Select Board approve a new 2013 taxi driver/ chauffeur license for Dennis Racine of East Hampton, MA, on behalf of Aaron's Transportation.
Second.
Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous. Common Vic.
I move that the Select Board amend the Common Vicu- Vicuaro license for Bass M. M. Farm Doing Business As College Pizza at 150 Fearing Street for hours Sunday through Thursday from 12:00 AM to 1:00 AM closing, and Friday and Saturday from 1:00 AM to 2:00 AM closing. Bass M. M. Farm Owner/Manager. Somehow that seems wrong.
It doesn't match the-
Yeah.
We have a new motion sheet, but, oh, what he asked, it doesn't-
Right.
It doesn't, his application differs. It's just from one to two, doesn't seem right.
Sunday, Thursday, it says 11:00 AM to 1:00 AM, which makes sense, rather than being open for an hour.
That's what I'm questioning.
And Friday and Saturday from-
I missed that.
11:00 AM to 2:00 AM. That's what it looks, that's what it says on the-
On the request.
This is already a revision of a prior one, and I don't think it's right yet. I don't think he plans to just be open three hours.
For an hour.
Or an hour.
That does seem unlikely.
I think this really shouldn't be voted. It should go back to him to figure out the timing.
Why is our motion so different?
Well, are we just missing, is this just a noon problem on Thursday? It should be noon.
No, no.
It says 11:00 on his app.
The actual request-
Yeah, I mean, what he's put in here is, let's see.
Let's call Mr. Musante and see if he can help us.
I want to suggest that the Select Board amend the motion sheet so that it is consistent with the application itself, so that-
Yeah, but the application doesn't make sense. That's the problem. Even those hours are strange. So he has from 11:00 AM to 1:00 AM.
That does make sense.
That one, I guess, works.
And then the Friday, Saturday would be 11:00 AM to 2:00 AM.
Okay, okay, that will work.
So the motion sheet changes are changing the 12:00 AM to 11:00 AM.
Okay.
And the 1:00 AM to 11:00 AM.
Second.
Okay.
Got a bunch of extra and missing ones here.
Yeah.
Okay. As amended, further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous. Okay. Now, it is 6:45, and our 6:45 item is something rather delightful and different. We are going to be honoring a certain distinguished member of our community, as well as taking care of a little bit of business in relation to him. So the individual is none other than Mr. Stan Zomeck. And Mr. Musante, would you like to tell us about this?
Sure, and Stan is here and will be formally making some gifts to the community on a couple of projects that he has had a direct hand in making a reality. The purchase and installation, and for lo these many years, the maintenance of the lights over at Community Field, on the baseball field, and the beautiful work in Sweetser Park, you know, around the fountain, major fundraising. And so there'll be some donation letters. But first, drafted with the help of staff and others, including staff who know the gentleman very well since birth, on a resolution that recites Stan's long history with the community, over 40 years as a town employee in leadership positions, including acting town manager multiple times, head of the DPW, and any number of building projects, and then serving the community in many, many other ways, including over 60 years of service with founding and running Amherst baseball all these years, serving many, many generations. So there's a proclamation that's been prepared for the Select Board's consideration tonight that someone might want to read.
Sure.
But, you know, as a, as a town leader, as a parent, as a, as a former coach and friend, you know, Stan's one of the treasures of the town, and it's great to honor him in this way.
I'm pleased to do so, given that he gave my son his football jersey, which was greatly treasured. Whereas Stanley P. Zomeck has served the town of Amherst as a dedicated town employee for over 41 years, including service as Supervisor of Maintenance, Supervisor of Recreation, Superintendent of Highways and Parks, Superintendent of Public Works, Tree Warden, Assistant to the Town Manager, and Acting Town Manager on numerous occasions. And whereas, Amherst citizen Stanley P. Zomeck has served the town of Amherst in many capacities for over 60 years, including service on the Mill River Recreation Building Committee, Crocker Farm Building Committee, Wildwood School Building Committee, Middle School Advisory Board, Regional Refuge Disposals Planning Board, Eastern Hampshire Solid Waste District, 250th Anniversary Committee, Kendrick Park Committee, Community Preservation Act Committee, Comprehensive Planning Committee, Recreation Commission, and Leisure Services Supplemental Education Commission. And whereas, Amherst citizen Stanley P. Zomeck has served the town of Amherst tirelessly in his commitment to public land in the town of Amherst, including negotiation and acquisition of Blumberg Recreation Area, Mill River Recreation Area, land on Chestnut and Strong Street for the middle school, and Wildwood Elementary, the town's landfill, Market Hill Road Water Treatment Plant, as well as supported acquisition of the Hawthorne Property on East Pleasant and the Ruxton Parcel on Pulpit Hill Road. And whereas, Stanley P. Zomeck has served the town of Amherst working on construction projects, including the wastewater treatment plant, landfill and capping of the old landfill, Grough Park, ball fields and picnic area, the Mill River Recreation Area, 1950s reconstruction of Community Field, reconstruction of the fountain and walkway in Sweetser Park with the Rotary Club, recreation fields on Stanley Street with the Kiwanis Club, administration of a fund drive for the pool with the War Memorial Pool trustees, supervision of construction of War Memorial Pool and Fields with the Recreation Commission. And whereas, Stanley P. Zomeck has further served the town of Amherst community, including services as the President of the Amherst Area Chamber of Commerce in 1979, founding of the Amherst Little League and Babe Ruth Programs, coordination of programming as Amherst League President, opening the Amherst League to Girls, the first in Western Massachusetts to do so, serving as Western MA District Two Commissioner, and as President of the National Babe Ruth League, and as Chair of the Babe Ruth World Series Committee, managing tournaments all over the nation, serving as coach, umpire, supervisor of umpires, and most importantly, mentoring generations of Amherst children. And whereas, Amherst citizen Stanley P. Zomeck has provided many services to the town of Amherst well beyond the call of duty, especially during periods of severe financial constraints. Now therefore, we, the Select Board of the town of Amherst, commend Stanley P. Zomeck for his outstanding service and hereby proclaim Saturday, April 27th, 2013, as Stanley P. Zomeck Day in the town of Amherst.
Second.
Mr. Hayden?
So there's no truth that he also signed the Declaration of Independence?
No, he's not old enough. He's a mere young man.
So it is our great honor to make this resolution, and this will be read and celebrated at an event on April 27th. There will be a, a dinner in Mr. Zomeck's honor and a fundraiser for Amherst baseball. Tickets for that are available at the Chamber and in other places. Am I missing any details on that event?
No, and tickets are still available for Saturday, April 27th. Should be a great, great night to be an Amherst citizen. Come out and enjoy and honor, honor Stan Zomeck.
So, thank you, Mr. Zomeck, for all that you have done for the town, lo these many years. We can officially vote to sign the proclamation. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous.
I think a round of applause is an honor.
Sure.
Okay, and then we've got the gift acceptances. So how does that work exactly?
Sure. In your, in your packet, you should have two, two letters of donation, and the first one is related to Community Field. And, yeah. They were added to the packet. So I mentioned in my opening remarks, the community fundraising effort, you know, spearheaded by, by Stan many years ago now to install lights at the ball field, the baseball field over at Community Field. And it was a big fundraising effort, and lights were put in, and there was a, there's a small balance in the fundraising account. The Amherst Athletic Alumni Association has been keeper of those funds and been using them piecemeal for maintenance needs, and donation has been offered to the community, which is the purpose of, of the business tonight, and as Stan to-
Well, the lights have been up for roughly 10 years or so, and there's no maintenance fund. And there's a question, who would maintain the lights if a bank went out? And in our discussion, David Knightley, who might be here, if Hopkins could beat baseball, he may show up. But anyway, we decided that to initiate a maintenance account with the town that would perpetuate itself without a financial problem for any. So I have a check here for $7,500, as agreed upon, to initiate that maintenance account. David, would you take it up to Mr. Musante? He handles all the money.
Thank you very much. So do we-
I would like to mention one thing with John Reddall and whoever on this big issue, that my first pay for the town in 1950 was 90 cents per hour.
We get 82 cents an hour, or, no, per day, I'm sorry. 82 cents a day for Select Board, so I feel your pain. Okay, so do we have a formal motion on the community fields acceptance? Not on the motion sheet. We can wing it.
If I could just add one point of clarification, that it, that it is the donation of the lights and the fund.
Right.
Which is significant, and, you know, I know the fundraising, all the people and all the time that went into fundraising for those lights. It was a significant cost and a, and a great benefit to Amherst Athletics.
Absolutely, and it's a-
Well, the lights actually cost about $95,000.
Wow.
That's a bucket, huh?
Good amount. Okay, so I think Mr. Musante is drafting a motion for us as we speak to make sure that we properly accept both the property and the money to the gift account.
My suggested motion, and I apologize for the lack of the wording on the motion sheet, a motion to accept the donation of lights at Community Field and a contribution of $7,500 from the Amherst Athletic Alumni Association, per their letter of April 22nd, 2013.
I so move.
Which would be put into the file.
I so move.
Second.
Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Aye, that's unanimous. And then the Sweetser Park Fountain.
Sweetser Park Fountain. Again, Mr. Zomeck can fill in. Another fundraising effort from a group aptly named the Friends of Sweetser Park on the fountain area, and there's a significant balance remaining that he wishes to donate to the town to be used for future repair and maintenance of the fountain marble, granite, and engraved bricks in the park. And there's a letter to that effect also dated today.
And the friends were Andy Jones, Justin Barnes, who's in Atlanta, Georgia, but Andy
Jones couldn't be here because he's managing a baseball team, and myself were the friends, and selling the bricks and getting other donation. After we were all done, we did have a balance of $20,181, and that's to be used to repair the fountain in the future, and the bricks. As you know, the fountain was out of commission from 1975, and the town had no money to repair it until the Rotary Club stepped in about 1993, '94, and a rededication. I would pass those down, too, and they didn't have enough for everybody. It was done in 1975, and it's still running.
And it is a real treasure of the downtown and just makes that park. So thank you again very, very much. And we have another motion.
Moving to accept the donation of $20,181.57 from the Friends of Sweetser Park for the purposes outlined in their letter dated April 22nd, 2013.
I so move.
Second.
Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that is unanimous.
I'm sorry, we don't have any more.
Keep them coming. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Happy Stan Zomeck Day on Saturday.
Yes.
We go.
We go. We go find the house?
Yes.
All right, stop, Vincent.
[laughing]. Okay. Let's see, it's now time for our seven o'clock item, which is the FY13 Third Quarter Budget Update.
Stan, don't let us keep your flyers. We'll get them to David.
We'll get them back here. And we have Mr. Poole here to talk to us about the third quarter budget update. And we have a memo in our packets. So, thank you very much for being here, Mr. Poole.
Thank you very much for having me. And I would like at the onset to, I would say to thank Sonia Aldrich, our comptroller, who's very good work for the town all the time, keeps track of all these numbers, and who is deserving or enjoying a well-deserved vacation with her family on the West Coast. So I get to fill in just by myself tonight. We said that the budget this year was a no drama budget. And I think for '14, we said it was a slow and steady budget. And our third quarter report could be a ho-hum report because we're right on track. There are no big surprises. I'm happy to report, we are three quarters of the way through the year. This report shows that we've collected 79% of our budgeted revenues. That's a little bit higher than you would expect only because there are certain timing things. Certain transfers happen right away, so they're not reflected through the course of the year on a steady pace, such as the departmental revenues from the Recreation Department, where there's an administrative transfer from the revolving fund that comes all at once. So that looks a little higher than it probably really is. In the income area, I think the only area that I think is of real concern is investment income that continues to lag because we are in a very low interest rate environment. And from year to year, it kind of sort of gets worse because in prior years, we had some CDs that were a little bit longer term that matured. And now reinvesting those in new CDs, you just don't get the same rate. So, we're going to continue to look at that. And I will, I think as we go forward, we may have to adjust that down further for FY14 once we set the recap sheet. But that has lagged. Everything else is doing pretty well. Motor vehicle excise taxes, which are a big source for us, are on target with where we expect them to be this year with continued growth in car sales. And so those are keeping a pace. Our other departmental revenue, we did have some nice surprises there. We had a one-time refund from the Commonwealth for the money that we normally have to pay them for our teachers being in the GIC, for the retired teachers insurance. They actually gave us a refund this year and that's not going to happen again because now we're out of the GIC. But I think it was about $86,000 that was a nice one-time source of funds. The hotel motel tax and the meals tax are doing very well. Hotel tax is at 104% of its budget so far. The meals tax is right on pace at 74%. So, those continue to meet expectations and in case the hotel tax actually exceed them. And the most important thing on the next page refers to our property tax, where we've collected just over 75, 75.9%. Since that's our biggest source of income, it's very good to see that that is on pace. And state aid has come in at the rate that we expected to. On the expenditure side in the general fund, the one department that sort of stands out in the sheets that we handed out is information technology. Because they had to expend so much money to replace the audiovisual equipment here, that will be made up mostly from an insurance settlement. And there's something that is on the warrant for the town meeting to deal with that. Everything else is really continuing apace. Again, with the exception of our insurance costs, which are up slightly. Insurance rates have increased. We have made an adjustment in the FY14 budget to supplement those accounts so that they will have sufficient funds next year. Overall, that deficit in that area in general services will be made up from savings in other parts of general government, so we don't see a problem there. And other spending, we are tracking, but I think it is fine. And the question that always comes up is about snow and ice. On the sheets here, you'll see that it looks like there's a deficit, but in fact, there are a number of encumbrances for things like buying more sand and salt. And since we really don't have to do that, we will liquidate those encumbrances and so we should be in fine shape there. Veteran Services will have a deficit. Again, you see it projected here on these sheets. We know that, so there is an article at town meeting to do a transfer of $35,000 to make up some of that. We did also put more money in the FY14 budget to continue to try to fund that adequately. But again, I think overall, we won't have any deficits. It will create a free cash problem or anything because there are other departments that will have savings. Finally, the enterprise funds are on track for their spending and their revenue. Water and sewer and solid waste are all doing fine. I continue to closely monitor the revenue on the transportation fund because frankly, we're not writing as many tickets as we have in the past. In some ways, that's a good thing because tickets are supposed to deter behavior that you don't want to have happen. So, some people would say in an ideal world, you wouldn't write any tickets. I would never say that, but some people might. It is something that I continue to keep an eye on. So those revenue numbers are down just a little bit. Everything else is going at the pace we expected to. So, it's a little bit of a ho-hum report, but for these kind of reports, that's probably good.
Definitely. Ho-hum, we will take. Everything tracking just as expected without concerns or drama discrepancy is exactly what we want to see. And again, we thank you for this very detailed report. It's so good to get this check in every three months and really just to know where things are. Questions or comments from the Select Board this time?
Is it the speed bumps that are putting down on the... Maybe we should take them out.
No, those would be, those are fines for moving violations.
These are.
These are tickets. The fines are actually coming in fine. Sorry. But it's the parking tickets that we're just not writing as many.
Other questions or comments, Ms. Brewer?
It's probably all those $1 transactions on credit cards. They're protecting people. The other thing I just wanted to mention is I really appreciate you telling us as we were going along, you know, that we've already adjusted upward for the other types of insurance, the not health insurance, and also for veteran services. You know, that's the other thing that gives us that reassurance over the course of the year. Yeah, things are a little bit like this. And then we've already adjusted for the upcoming year, so that's really great. And then, just to emphasize again, so we actually got money from the state we didn't expect. That's really a bonus when we moved the teachers over. And you said that was in the $80,000? Wow, excellent.
Yeah, no, it was, they keep very careful track of the charges from year to year. And at the end of the day, when we pulled out of the GIC, they said, "Oh, well, actually, we owe you some money."
Are we complaining enough about the state? I want to say yay, state, for that. Thanks.
Other questions or comments on the budget update? Questions or comments from the public on the budget update? All right, then, thank you very much. Really appreciate this and we'll talk again in three months. Okay, let's see. 7:09, so that is the same as 7:10, which is the beginning of this week's Town Meeting Warrant Article Review. We have, tonight, we're finishing up most of the budget stuff and we are doing zoning. But first, we're starting with the Amherst Palom Regional Assessment Model. We did invite the folks from the schools to come if they wanted to. Do you know if they opted to or not?
They are not coming.
They're not coming, okay. So, we decided that really their budget doesn't change dramatically from year to year. The Select Board is familiar with how both the library and school budgets work. And all of those have been debated in great detail at the school committee and library meetings. So, we opted to give them the opportunity to do a commercial on this if they wanted to, but to not have to come in and explain to us the stuff we already know. Ms. Brewer?
And also a quick plug for Budget Coordinating Group because Budget Coordinating Group, we all talk every so often about where are we at with our budgets? Is there any expected drama, et cetera? So, we can feel assured from that standpoint as well.
Right, and, you know, we can't, what's the word? Is it underestimate, overestimate? Can't speak highly enough about the value for that coordination because, you know, I like to send Select Board dramas in other towns periodically. And, you know, when the school folks and the town folks become completely out of sync, really bad things happen. And it's incredible how the distance in their budget planning can grow. And at the end of the day, folks have no idea what the other folks are doing. So, that is not at all the situation in Amherst. We're very fortunate to have really excellent budget coordination. So the schools and the libraries were able to completely meet the Finance Committee guidelines and they've addressed all of their issues internally. So, we will start with Article 15, which is the Amherst Palom Regional Assessment Model. This is one of these articles that we have to do every year to deal with the fact that we are using an alternative to the state's formula for regional assessment. This is, this takes a rolling five-year average, or rather, a five-year average of the student population from each of the communities in the region to determine the assessment. And town meetings in each of those towns need to vote on this every year. Mr. Musanti?
That's exactly right, and it requires a vote each and every year. So Town Meeting has seen this article for the past several years when we reverted essentially back to the original regional agreement about how the assessments are distributed amongst the member community. So, this article is before all four towns once again, just prior to consideration of the school budget itself and recommending approval, as is the Regional School Committee.
I think it's not unreasonable to imagine that this might have more questions this year considering the situation with the regional school planning process that's ongoing. So this could be folks' opportunity to kind of ask for... I'm not sure if this is going to be an update from folks under Article 1, do you know?
A brief one.
A brief one, yeah.
Because it's a little, it's a little soon, even with Town Meeting being relatively late. Decisions won't have been made yet by Town Meeting, so... But I appreciate that comment because if nothing else, it's important that people be aware that if regionalization pre-K-2.6 happens based on the votes in the various towns in the fall, then when it comes time for annual Town Meeting, there will be a second one of these assessment method discussions. And it's theoretically possible this one will change, but there will be two of these kinds of motions because we would have two districts then.
So, yeah, there might be an update at that point. Mr. Hayden?
And in the meantime, I'm recalling that at the four towns meeting, that this model was generally acceptable. There was some discussion, but it was generally okay, so...
All right, the schools do always figure it out based on both models just so all the communities can look at the plus and minuses of both. But it consistently is agreed that this is the fairest way to do this for all the communities. All right, Ms. Stein, would you like to make the motion?
Sure. I move that the Select Board recommend the May 6, 2013 Annual Town Meeting, Article 15, Amherst Palom Regional School District Assessment Model method.
Second.
Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that is unanimous. Next up is the, oh, Ms. Brewer, would you like to speak to that?
Yes, please. She can. Give my little commercial.
She can.
All right, next is the, back to Article 16, which we mostly dealt with last time, the operating budget schools portion. So we did kind of a little intro to that. We do have the school budgets in our packets. Those are online for everyone who is following along at home. But we're not going to go into great detail on them. Mr. Musanti, is there anything you would like to say in general about the elementary and/or regional budgets?
I think reinforcing the main point you made, that both budget proposals have been recommended by the respective school committees and they are completely responsive to the budget guidelines that were put out in November by the Amherst Finance Committee that allow for a 3% increase in the Amherst assessment for the regional schools. And just over a 2% increase on the elementary schools, which is the equivalent of a 3% increase to the base but subtracting back out some one-time monies that were used to support the current year budget from free cash in anticipation of school choice revenues, replacing that in next year. So, both of those proposals were made by the superintendent and vetted through a very public hearing process through the school committees and they've been recommended for approval and, you know, we're good.
Thank you, and thank you for making the point about the school choice. So basically, that makes whole what had been kind of them borrowing against the future last year.
It was the understanding we all had reached last year when budgets were recommended at Town Meeting.
And that was why we did that, we recommended that free cash appropriation, which Town Meeting supported, so... All right, further conversation, discussion about the school elementary or regional assessment. Anyone in the public want to comment on that? All right, Ms. Stein, would you like to make the motions?
I move that the Select Board recommend to the May 6, 2013 Annual Town Meeting, Article 16, FY14 Operating Budget, elementary schools in the amount of $21,989,199.
Second.
Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that is unanimous. And region?
I move that the Select Board recommend to the May 6, 2013 Annual Town Meeting, Article 16, FY2014 Operating Budget, regional schools in the amount of $29,130,815 and the appropriation of $14,158,830 for Amherst proportional share.
Second.
Further discussion. Anything more to be said on the region? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that is unanimous.
So who's speaking to the schools, Alyssa Brewer?
Well, my theory was that if Mr. Hayden wanted to do all of the operating...
Oh, there's that.
Oh, that's fine.
Okay.
Okay, all right, I won't ask that question again, so... All right.
All right, so then the next up, sure, you can make the motion, then we'll talk about that.
Oh, okay. I move that the Select Board recommend to the May 6, 2013 Annual Town Meeting, Article 16, FY2014 Operating Budget, libraries in the amount of $2339,757 with town tax support of $1,741,512.
Second.
Further discussion. So, this was another excellent planning process, excellent coordination process with the town and the schools. Again, this budget meets the Finance Committee guidelines. It was done extra early this time. I think that this budget came out like the day before the town manager's budget, which was fun.
Duly noted.
Pressure's on.
Anything else you would like to add?
Again, responsive to the available constrained revenues. And Director Sherry and the library trustees did an excellent job articulating in their budget proposal, which is posted online, including in tonight's packet, along with the school budgets. A good job explaining the operations of the library, upcoming goals and objectives, and some performance information, and explaining what's going on with their other funding sources. A multi-year plan to position the endowment for sustainability long-term. So there's a number of initiatives, a very reinvigorated fundraising effort, et cetera. So, a very thorough picture and encourage folks to read up on the library budget in that report.
Thank you. Further discussion. Any comment from the public on the library budget? And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that is unanimous. Okay, now we get into zoning articles. And we have Mr. Tucker here from the Planning Department and Mr. Crowner here from Zoning Subcommittee. And we have, in our Town Meeting packet... And we have, in our Town Meeting packets, and I hope folks brought the information on the following articles. And just so you folks know, we did have public comment at the beginning from Ms. Perot, who was expressing concern about, I believe it was 31 through 33, or 32, the first couple, about its, about the timeliness of the articles given the lack of the housing study and not being able to get full information about what the implications might be. So she had to leave, but just so you know, that was public comment in the beginning. So we do have these in our packets, but why don't you tell us what you'd like us to know extra about Article 30? And welcome.
So I'm, I'm representing the Planning Board. I'm Rob Crowner. Article 30 is, is a, is, just corrects a duplication of effort that we did in, in the Fall Town Meeting in which we passed two competing sets of, of standards and conditions for converted dwellings. We passed one that, that called for oversight that included professional management of converted dwellings. And subsequently, we passed, that is, Town Meeting passed a condition that required owner occupancy or resident manager for converted dwellings. So the clear intent of Town Meeting was, was the latter and, and so this just erases the, the duplication of the previous one.
Great. Questions or comments about this? We kind of knew this was coming based on the discussion from the, from the previous Town Meeting. Okay, anyone from the public like to comment on Article 30? You're good? Okay, all right. So Select Board, Ms. Stein, would you like to make the motion?
Yes, if I can find it. Just give me a minute. There it goes. Okay, I move that the Select Board recommend to the May 6, 2013 Annual Town Meeting, Article 30, zoning converted dwellings.
Second.
Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
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 It's unanimous. And we'll go back to speakers for all of these at the end. Okay, so then Article 31.
I'm going to introduce Article 31 along with 32 and 35. Those are the three that we're presenting as sort of a package, as our, as our main work this, this year. These, these articles are, first of all, you have the, the map of the town, nice colorful map. These articles are focused on the, on the red spots. That's, that's all affecting. That's, those are our business zones. It's not affecting any of the yellow or the gray or the green. It's just the red. And these, these articles are motivated by our, our continuing effort to implement the master plan and its vision of enhancing our village centers. And also by the Housing Production Plan, which indicates a significant shortfall in our housing supply across a range of demographics. How can we address these? What we're trying to do is make it possible for more housing to, to happen in Amherst, but to direct it to the centers while at the same time trying to make it so that people want to live there and so that businesses want to locate there. Our strategy is, is to make some changes to our business zones, you know, in a more broad application than, than before, but also more incremental, not as dramatic, at least in our opinion. We're doing that by loosening some restrictions that speak to capacity and tightening some that speak to form or character. So that's, that's the introduction to these, these three. So the first one, Article 31, is standards and conditions for mixed-use buildings. Currently, mixed-use buildings, these are the only kinds of residential use that are allowed in, in certain zones, the BL and the COM zones. Those zones don't allow apartments and so on. So, so if there's going to be any residential in those areas, it has to be in a mixed-use building. A mixed-use building contains generally commercial and, or retail or something on the ground floor and residential on upper floors. But those residential uses are constrained by lot size. They're constrained by a fairly low threshold for a special permit. What we're proposing to do is raise the threshold at which a, a special permit is required to put residential use in mixed-use buildings. And also allow for the possibility of some residential use on the ground floor of mixed-use buildings, which currently is not allowed, other than staircases and things that serve upper floors. So our proposal is, is to put the threshold for a special permit in mixed-use buildings, residential uses at 10 units, raising it from six. It's actually six or 6,000 square feet or more than twice as much as, as the ground floor use. All of these things are, make it difficult to, to attain any kind of residential use on, on upper floors. And we want there to be mixed-use buildings. We want mixed-use buildings to be built. We want them to thrive. And so we think that we need to allow for more possibility for residential use. That's what this is intended to do. The, the, with regard to the ground floor residential use, currently it's restricted to 10%, and that's incidental to upper floor use. We're proposing to increase it to 40%, of which only 15% can be incidental to upper, upper floors. That means that around 25% is possible for ground floor residential units for living space. And we're going to direct that to the rear of buildings. We want to maintain a commercial streetscape. So I, I think in, in most cases, there will not be a dramatic amount of ground floor residential use. It would require actually a large building in order to have a lot of, of units, but there might be room for one unit, two units in, in a standard mixed-use building. That's summary.
Okay. Questions or comments from Select Board about Article 31? Mr. Hayden?
I wasn't able to go to the public hearing on this. I'm wondering what issues were raised there that we might want to consider.
So I think there, there are two main considerations. One is that, as I said, mixed-use buildings are the only possibility for residential use in commercial zones and BL zones. There are some people who are concerned about allowing more, more residential use in commercial zones. So that's a concern. Anytime, anytime you make it more possible, then, then there's more possibility of people actually living there. So that's a concern.
Which is the point, yeah.
Yeah, it is or it isn't, who knows. The other possible concern is that allowing ground floor residential use sort of dilutes the purpose of, of a mixed-use building. So.
Of course, the rear entrance helps that.
Exactly, right. That's, yeah, that's, yes.
Ms. Stein, you had your hands raised?
I don't know how reasonable this question is, but I'm wondering about building mixed-use buildings if we don't have businesses willing to take up the space. I watched how slowly the space behind duties, it was vacant for a long, long time. So I guess the zoning is reasonable. I certainly approve of, of the suggestions that you're making. I'm just wondering if, you know, buildings get built and then the front stays vacant because there aren't businesses willing to be built. It's a concern.
It is a concern, I agree. And I guess I would say that the, there's clearly a market for housing. And so one response to your thing is, is just allow housing there. But, but that, but that means that there's less space for commercial. And so we actually want to promote both. And so, so presumably they will happen in tandem, perhaps slowly, but we want to make the possibility there.
Mr. Waltz?
Yeah, just briefly, thank you. That was very clear and helpful. My impression from reading the description of the other articles to the explanation was that precisely for the reasons Ms. Stein referred to, that purely commercial buildings are not going to be as successful either. So the idea is by the mixed use to attract greater vitality and bring people who live there, plus the businesses, a good split approach to the problem.
Other questions and comments from Select Board? Mr. Hayden?
In the Housing Production Report, there was some, some discussion on the value, the need for live-work type of, of residential units. Does this add those types of units to our stock? I mean, it doesn't, doesn't mention it explicitly, but I'm, I'm wondering if there's a sense that it might.
That, that is part of the intent. So, so that's, that was the motivation. That was why we started thinking about ground floor residential use in, in, in mixed-use buildings as sort of a live, a response to, to a live-work need. So, yeah, anytime you, you allow someone to live where there is business, there's greater possibility that person who lives there will actually work in the business, or vice versa, the person who has the business will find a place to live there.
Other questions? Mr. Hayden, sorry.
Yeah, and that's an interesting distinction to make. People who are, are living where they work as a, similar to people who are living where they own a business where they work, so it's.
Most people don't know that actually that's what this big curtain is here, that we all keep, we all kind of live there.
Our shots are in there.
It's cozy.
Ms. Brewer?
I just wanted to take this opportunity, before I forget, to say thank you, thank you, thank you to the Planning Board and the Planning Department staff for getting reports to us in the first Town Meeting mailing. I know that's a big struggle to get done, to try and get the hearing completed, the work done, to actually write the report, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And I always gripe about it every year that we get them all at the last minute. And it's gotten better over the years, and this is really exceptional to have had several in the first mailing. So thank you, please.
Thanks for the feedback.
Do what you can to keep it going. It's great.
Other questions or comments from Select Board? All right, anyone from the public like to comment on Article 31? Ms. Keller?
Thank you, Janet Keller, Precinct 1. If I may just briefly preface my remarks about Article 31 with some remarks about the package of, the main zoning package and talk about the challenges that it's presented to us as citizens trying and members of Town Meeting trying to understand as best we could, no one can predict the future and this is expected to play out over time. I perfectly well understand that, but even when I take a 10-acre parcel and try to go back and forth among all the references, I'm having a devil of a time trying to work out what the impacts are. At one point, I came up with, well, it could be about 200, 250 units now and it could be 300 later, but I can't really be sure. And then, of course, those numbers translate, if you multiply them by four, into quite a few units, 1,200. So the, one thing I want to say is it's a big package. It's got some big pieces. The pieces are intertwined and they're very complex. And that alone has raised concerns. It makes people a little edgy. That said, the other thing I think that the folks that are in North Amherst are very concerned about is that we are impacted by a relatively large area that is next to some unprotected farmland, historic resources and conservation areas. And the whole principle of the master plan is to develop first and to focus on those areas that most need redevelopment and infill that are already developed. So I, I want to say we share the concerns about mixed-use intensifying the residential use in mixed-use, pushing out businesses. That certainly is the line of least resistance. And we are eager to have businesses that would serve our, our neighborhood and the surrounding areas. So that's a concern for us. And I think that's basically it. We're concerned it's a big area. It would be, it would greatly increase the density. It's very complex and intertwined. Some days I say intertwined when I'm trying to do the math. And we're very concerned about it, it pushing out businesses that we badly want in our village center. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Other folks from the public? Ms. Adams?
Maureen Adams, is this working? Precinct 10. We had raised these points with the Planning Board. A very great concern for many of us was that the intertwined package was simply too big. We felt that the North Amherst area, which had been wisely separated from Atkins Corner in an earlier discussion at Town Meeting, was not really a village center. It's a very broad package of acreage. And in that, it differs from the other much smaller areas and I think arguably fair and appropriate areas. So it seems to me that the package is a setup for an up or down vote for people who might want to vote for it, but cannot vote for the North Amherst piece. We discussed this with the Planning Board. The Planning Board said that they were all COM areas and couldn't be separated. But I still feel that with a careful scalpel, it should be possible to make the kind of distinction that would enable us to vote for the remainder of the package while separating the North Amherst issues, which are different both in quality and in kind from the issues raised by the other parts of the article. So I regret that they're linked and I appeal to the Select Board, as I had appealed to the Planning Board, to please find a way to disentangle them. Most serious in my mind for the North Amherst part is that, as Janet Keller said a moment ago, there's no real calculus for the impact. And with such a broad area and so many potential scenarios of development there, I think it's seriously risky for the inhabitants of North Amherst. And finally, I would like to remind us that the master plan had two components, two major themes. One, of course, is development, but the other is protection and sustaining neighborhoods. And I often find that we emphasize the one at the expense of the other. So my basic request is that we find a mode of disentanglement. Thank you.
Thank you. Other folks want to comment on this article? Okay. Further questions or comments by Select Board? Mr. Crowner, would you like to address any of the issues raised?
It's, it's true that, that, that we can't know what the impact is going to be, but, but we also don't really know, and we're not counting the impact that not doing anything is having, I mean, what status quo is. We, I, I think the, the points that are raised are, are very important and they're, and they, and they, they make a lot of sense to me. But the feeling of the Planning Board is that all of our, all of our business zones, including the COM zone, are potential mixed-use residential, commercial areas. They, and, and we should think of them all as, as centers. They have different sets of, of dimensional regulations. They have different sets, sets of use possibilities. So they're going to be, they're going to differ. But there's, the, the original point of the COM zone to try and attract heavy industry or mall or something like that, that's not going to happen. It's, it's, it's not going to happen. It's, it's probably not really what we want. So, so we need to find a way to, to use them differently, to think of them differently. The other point that I would like to make is that as far as saving neighborhoods goes, that's also extremely important to the Planning Board. And people will differ, but, but our approach is that we are attempting to save neighborhoods by- approach is that we are attempting to save neighborhoods by directing new housing, new residential use to centers rather than neighborhoods. I mean, that's, our neighborhoods are under, under threat, and, and we need to either kick them all out, which we can't do, or find somewhere else for them to go. And so that's, that's, that's part of what this is about.
Thank you very much. Other questions or comments from select board, or Mr. Tucker?
I'd like to speak briefly, if I could, to the question of impact. I'd like to, and I'll go over all three of the amendments, Article 31, 32, and 35, very briefly. Basically, the changes are not large. Remember, what's happening is that the mixed-use building is going from six upper-floor units to 10 by right. Anything more than that, anything bigger than that, automatically goes to special permit, which is the way it works now. So that's not a huge change. It makes them slightly more viable. Article 32 makes changes to several of the minor dimensional regulations, front setback being one of the most important, it's creating a range for, in order to bring new buildings up to the street, to create a pedestrian streetscape. Probably the most significant change under Article 32 is the addition of a footnote B, so that minimum lot area and additional lot area per family is no longer tied to residential units in that, in that district. That is the way it is now in the general business district in the downtown, it's the way it is in all of our village center districts, and this is an attempt to shift the limited business districts and the commercial districts, maps of which you have, to becoming, as Mr. Crowner says, more like centers and less like potential shopping mall areas. That does create both the opportunity for more units, remembering that if you have a mixed-use building, you still have that limitation of 10, above which is a, a special permit. Because we had an example during one of the earlier hearings on this, where someone was proposing to develop the concept for a building in, in North Amherst, and the lot that they were on would allow them to have, you know, three-story building, which is the size of the, the building that's permitted in that district, four apartments, no more than four. So they ended up with two huge apartments, conceptually, on the upper, the two upper floors, the only, which, the only way to make viable would be to make them into many, 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 many bedrooms, which lends itself to, you can imagine. With the removal of that limitation, you can have more smaller units, fewer bedrooms on upper floors, with the opportunity of having a market other than students, which is part of the intent here. Finally, Article 35, and I'll just, I don't mean to preempt things here, but just to talk about how it knits together, takes some of the dimensions that are created under Article 32, and tries to cause buildings that are now the result of 1960s and 1970s zoning for, for highway, commercial strip development, and are set well back from the road with driveways and parking in front of them, pull any additions or expansions would come up to the street to create that pedestrian streetscape over time. That's not a spur to greater intensity, that's directing where intensity goes. So the overall impacts of these in all of the districts in which they're located, although it's impossible to quantify, is not huge and doesn't begin to approach the kinds of impacts that were being discussed under both of the previous village center rezonings.
Thank you. And do either of you want to speak about, Ms. Adams' point about the, the various districts all being, all being part of these, and whether or not they could be disconnected?
So the, the way to do that would be to create a new zone, which is what we tried to do before, we tried to create a new zone called NABC. Now, maybe, maybe we had the dimensions, maybe we had the boundaries wrong, but, but right now comm is comm, and, and, and it exists in, in a few places in town. We couldn't, we couldn't break off one comm from another comm unless we created a new zone. That's not what, that's not what we're doing here.
Great. Further comment by select board, Mr. Hayden, and then Mr. Wald?
You suggested that this is an incremental change, and, you know, we're hoping it's going to have an incremental effect. I'm wondering if you imagine it's going to be enough? As you know, there's a little bit of a housing crisis, I'm not going to call it a housing crisis, I'm going to call it a neighborhood crisis going on, where, you know, this type of occupancy is ending up in places where it really doesn't support high-quality neighborhoods and family-based neighborhoods. Will this really help move traffic and density out of our family neighborhoods and into places where we have the infrastructure? Really, I kind of, I see huge pressures on housing in town, and right now that pressure's being relieved, relieved in a way which is inappropriate. And will this help?
I think it'll help. Whether, whether it will solve it, I, I'm not going, not going to claim that. That's, that's too difficult to say. But, but the, the press of demand drives up the cost, and that, and that prices people out. It both, it both makes some houses too, too tempting to sell and too hard to buy. So, so if you have a greater supply, I, I imagine that the cost will go down, and it'll be more economical for people to stay in neighborhoods and not turn them over to somebody else.
And Mr. Wald?
Yeah, thank you again, that was very helpful, and I think Mr. Tucker's point about the, the state law and zoning is, is well, well taken. It, it seems problematic always to have one particular part of town or another want to exempt itself from a plan that's intended to be comprehensive, because that's the nature of zoning, it's got to be consistent. I'm also a little bit, I mean, I understand the fears, because change is difficult, and uncertainty, of course, causes stress, and we've seen some very unfortunate developments in neighborhoods, so we don't want to repeat them. But I think right now we risk losing more by inaction than by action. I noticed also, recalling the debate about North Amherst zoning last time, if I recall correctly, people were so concerned in some cases about change, that in the attempt to produce a compromise package in hopes of getting it passed, areas that would have been downzoned to the west of Sandlin Road were put back into the current status, because people felt the status quo was more comforting than change. The problem is comm wants to do some kind of ugly things. I live in North Amherst, I drive through these areas every day, and precisely what Mr. Crowner, Mr., and Mr. Tucker were saying, is that we want to be avoiding here the all kind of strip mall development that has, you know, that's not a village center, that's ugly suburban sprawl, when you've got large blocks of asphalt and parking, and then the structures all commercial setback from the road. The other thing is that, as the report of the planning board says, the current zoning for mixed-use centers has not attracted desired businesses and other uses, in part because those uses require a critical mass of immediately adjacent residential customers. So it seems to me that the idea of loosening things, as you said very nicely, loosening up some requirements on dimensions, but tightening requirements for character is very important, and the form-based codes are important there, too, because as I understand it, the current zoning and the combination of the current zoning with lot coverage and, and heights and so forth encourages people in commercial areas to put in lots of rectangular buildings with flat roofs. And what we're doing here is producing a more vernacular style in keeping with New England farmhouse, so it's more in keeping with the aesthetic and historic character of the neighborhood, and it encourages mixed-use residential small units, and we're not allowing townhouses, we're not allowing apartments, we're not putting in student slums. So I understand some of the concerns, but it seems to me that the measure, which again passed unanimously by the planning board, is reasonably well-crafted and offers probably the best chance we have to fix some of these problems now and not, not let them get worse.
Mr. Hayden?
Just a request of your presentation. I'm looking at the, the red up in North Amherst, sort of with an eye towards the earlier comment we had about appropriateness, and I'm recalling one meeting that I attended where there was a, a nice, I would call it an overlay, except that's a technical term that you use all kind of, a, a graphic that showed which part of that was, had building restrictions on it, either because it's already in farmland protection or it's in floodplain and, well, not only floodplain, but conservation. There's a, there's a number of 50-foot resource areas and 100-foot buffers that have to be observed, which do significantly reduce that part of the triangle. Ms. Sedes.
Yes, so a long-range goal would be to change the boundaries there so that it actually more closely reflects what's actually possible. It's not going to be possible to develop every square inch of that red spot, it's not.
Ms. Burr?
So, this is awkward, but maybe somebody else can help me reword it somehow. Unfortunately, Ms. Perot had to leave, and I want to think about something that I thought I heard her say, that I'm not, and I don't want to misspeak for her or speak for her, it's just that if someone else understands the concept behind it, because it came up at the planning board hearing, then maybe it will become clearer to me what we're talking about. When I look at, you know, first, you know, I look at this, which is in the back of the room, and that we had on our desk tonight, with the two reds above and below the river, north and south of the river. And then when I look at the page that says North Amherst Mixed-Use Districts North, which is mostly above the river and a little bit of south of the river is shown there, what I thought I heard said earlier is, north is rural, south is where the amenities are. But north may be rural seeming, but it has a huge area of commercial zoning that hasn't been successful the way we expected in terms of commercial zoning. So arguably, you know, we're one to turn back the clock 30 or 50 years, one might not have zoned it commercial, one would have thought of something else. But, and that's was your reference previously to malls or a heavy industry. But the fact that it is currently not a mall or heavy industry doesn't, the fact that it's failed commercial doesn't make it rural. Isn't that true? And that village center is what we have south of the river. So it's not like it's two sets of commercial and we like the north commercial and not the south commercial. It's that it's not very commercial north of the river, and what's south of the river is where what limited business, you know, people go to the post office and go to the convenience store is right there. So I'm having a little trouble with the way some of the arguments are being framed in terms of what I would expect a map to look like based on what certain comments are, and so I'm just a little confused. So if you have anything to add to that, that would be helpful, that'd be great.
I, I don't, I think, I think you said it well, that, that, it's, it is, it's, it is difficult to, to, to really understand it completely, and, and, and it's, you can easily see things in different ways depending on which direction you're looking and which, you know, what color glasses you are, and so on, so.
Mr. Tucker, and then Mr. Wald?
Partly because aspects of that question have been floating around. I checked the, our archives, our zoning archives this afternoon, and found that in 1958, this whole area, including the area west of Montague Road, was zoned for manufacturing, and it basically allowed everything under the sun. And it wasn't until 1962 that the current, more or less current, commercial district with that boundary line pulled back from Montague Road came into play, and most of the dimensions, including floors, three floors, and most of the use categories have been consistent and remain the same since. Fifty-five years, just about, of no change and not very successful implementation of the zoning in, in terms of business activity. So it's overdue for a change.
Thank you. And Mr. Wald?
Yes, if Mr. Tucker and Mr. Crowner could clarify something. We don't want to go back and, and go through all the old failed attempts, but maybe you could just speak briefly to this. Now, as I recall, quite well, in fact, a lot of the concerns were about that strip on Montague Road, and that's residential, that is not touched by this. And could you then clarify the difference, I mean, in a nutshell, between the initial proposed rezoning for NABC, the North Amherst Village Center, and the proposal here? This is a lot less intense, as I understand it.
It's, okay, it's, I would say it's less intense in, in two ways, or it's, it's, the intensity is changed in different, in two ways. One is that we're leaving, leaving the comm uses intact, we're, we're changing how flexible they, they can be. But leaving the comm uses intact, not adding the strictly residential uses that, that we had originally proposed last year, or two years ago. The other way that it's, that intensity is affected is, is, is in the boundaries. The, the boundary along Montague Road stays the same as, as our ultimate proposal last year. But we, we did also propose moving the comm east away from 116, away from the river, that's not affected by this proposal. So technically, that still will be comm all the way to 116, regardless of whether this passes or not, that's going to be comm.
Right.
It's, it's just a matter of, of how flexible the, the use of that land is.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, select board, need other comment or question before we're ready to take a position? All right, Ms. Stein, would you like to make the motion?
I move that the select board recommend the May 6, 2013 Annual Town Meeting Article 31 zoning, mixed-use buildings standards and conditions.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous. All right, next up is 32, mixed-use center dimensions.
Okay, 32 is changing the dimensional table for, for the business zones, for the mixed-use centers. And by the way, we're, that's, we're referring to them as, as mixed-use centers. I mean, there, there are business zones, all of our business zones, all the ones that start with B plus comm. And what we're doing here is, is changing some of the dimensions, making them a little bit more flexible, and at the same time introducing what was before in, in the form-based design, form-based code section of, of the proposals that we had in previous years. So we're, for BL and comm, we're, we're proposing to reduce the minimum lot area required for, for residential units. For, for each of the zones, we're, we're proposing to substitute a range of setbacks, both minimum and maximum, instead of just a minimum. We're adding footnote A, which allows the permanent granting body to modify the zone, modify the dimension for, for a number of, of the dimensional things there, building coverage most particularly, maximum building coverage. So we're not changing, we're not changing the default, we're not changing it from 35 or 70, but we're allowing the permanent granting body, in, in most cases it would be the, the special permanent granting body, to change it if, if it fits in the context of the surrounding neighborhood. And we're also substituting a maximum height with a range that goes from minimum to a maximum. We want a, buildings to be both a certain height and, and not exceed a certain height. We want, we want to create a streetscape, we want to create a, a street envelope that, that is, you know, closes the street and makes, makes it a place where people want to be. So, so that's what part of this article does. The second part is, as Mr. Tucker says, it, it adds footnote B to the lot area requirements for BL and comm, and that's pretty important. That's, that's where, that regulates the number of units that are possible on a lot, more so than, than anything else. It's, it's, if you have, as it stands right now, if you have, if you are allowed to do six units on a lot, you, you would need an acre, a lot of an acre in order for that. That means that you have one building with six units in it on an acre of land, and you can't have another building there. That's, it's, it's, it's not an efficient use of, of the land. So we're, we're suggesting that So we're, we're suggesting that lot size be taken away and, and, and regulated strictly by the permit, how many units you can have, the size of the building and the permit. And finally, we're, we're proposing to change how we measure the height of a building. Right now, we measure height by the highest point on the roof. Unfortunately, that means that sloped roofs do not have the capacity that they, that they might otherwise have. And so it, it sort of encourages against New England-style pitched roofs, encourages in favor of flat roofs. That's not as friendly-looking, it's not interesting. So we'd like to promote pitched roofs. And so we're suggesting that roofs be measured by the midpoint of the top, the highest point of the, of the main ridge line and the lowest point. That's a standard way of measuring height in many other places, and so we're just adopting it in Amherst, or we're proposing to adopt it in Amherst. That's in Section 6.19, that, that's referred to in, in the dimensional table.
Thank you. Questions or comments for Mr. Crowder on Article 32? Ms. Ayden?
Yeah, I'm going to ask, maybe this is going to be the repeated question. What, in, in your public hearings, what came up in, as responses and concerns with this?
It's the same thing. It's, it's, it's what impact will it have on the business, mixed-use business zone that's near me? I mean, how much, how much more residential use is going to happen as a result of these proposed changes? I think the, the changes to the, to the dimensional table itself are, are not very big. Those, those are small changes. Again, where, where the impact is, is in footnote B, that, that, that takes away the, the lot size requirements for residential use.
Ms. Ayden?
Yeah, I'm going to recall from my planning board days that sometimes it's a small change that gets you under the threshold or over the threshold to the big change that you're, you're looking for. So I understand that.
Other Select Board questions or comments? Ms. Per.
I actually like the small thing of the roof situation, because I, flat roofs, not only, I'm not as, in some ways even as entranced by the appearance, but just the necessity of having to maintain a flat roof, just so, it just seems like an unfortunate consequence of what, the way we were doing it before. Whereas not only do we like the way they look better, it's a lot better to maintain. So, good on us.
Yeah, we have some architects on the planning board pointing that out to us.
Other questions and comments from Select Board? Mr. Wald?
At the risk of a digression, I want to speak out in favor of flat roofs in general. The Nazis denounced them as alien Arab architecture and thought the pitched roof was the ultimate in German culture. So these debates change from context to context. No, I occasionally regret the fact there isn't more modern architecture in Amherst, but I think here, where we're trying to make things fit, there's a logic for it. But I wouldn't, I wouldn't want people to get the impression that a flat roof is entirely bad, because we have green flat roofs and we have gardens and things like that. So I hope that there'll be still room for flat roofs in Amherst.
Yeah, so they're not, not prohibited, it's just, it's just allowing more flexibility.
Other questions or comments from Select Board? All right, anyone from the public like to comment on Article 32? So this is new information or specific to 32, right?
You bet.
Excellent.
So, Janet Keller, Precinct 1. And I want to point out a few important points here. The first is that, if someone can show me that my math is off, I'll be glad to step back from this. But my assessment of these changes is that they are decidedly non-trivial. So for example, let me pull this back up here. Got a lot of paper, I've been working on this, and, this is the guy I want. So the mixed-use center dimensions, as you know, we do have this big section of red commercial area in the center of North Amherst. And what this rezoning does is allow higher buildings on much smaller lots, as I do the math now. 63% less lot space for each added family, 58% less frontage, 66% shallower setback, cut the minimum lot size from 20,000 square feet to 15,000, and the added lot area per family from 4,000 square feet to 25,000, cut the minimum lot frontage by 50% from 125 to 60 feet, minimum setback from 50%, by 50% from 20 to 10. I appreciate the minimum, minimum, maximum, that flexibility, I think that reasoning makes a whole lot of sense. And also raising the height, but that doesn't trouble me, and I like the peaked roofs as well. I think they're more functional, I think they look better, I think it's a great idea. So I, I want to emphasize that sometimes I feel like North Amherst is Rodney Dangerfield. Don't get no respect. And we in North Amherst are not afraid of change, and we are for appropriate change that does not put out-of-scale inappropriate uses cheek-by-jowl with multi-generational neighborhoods, farms, floodplains, wetlands, and unprotected historic resources. These are our assets. They're looking a little shabby right now, but they can look a lot better. And packing in more housing, I don't feel is going to help us. In regard to the ruralness or not-ruralness of North Amherst, it's 60% low density despite the stuff on, on Meadow Street and South. When you come from Meadow Street north, that area is 60% low density. It's either RN, which is a reasonably low-density residential neighborhood zoning, RO, rural outline, residential outline, or residential low-density. In fact, the residential low-density is the lowest-density category. And I want to caution that while the land that's permanently protected for farmland, we have some farmland that the town has identified as farmland conservation, I believe that's the right term, that's unprotected, as are, and I think we should not be sanguine about the protections for wetlands and floodplains either. They are regulated, they're not protected absolutely. So, I guess those are the things I want to say. The article is, 32 is designed to be somewhat separable, BL and comm are one set of, of regulate, separately, separate dimensions. Business, general business has a separate set, as does business, village center. So this has been described as incremental change, there is the opportunity, if one wanted to work with us, and we are, I want to reiterate, we're not against change, we are, stand fully ready to support appropriate change for our neighborhood. So those parts, commercial and business, limited business, could be separated out. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Other questions or comments from the public on Article 32? Okay, Mr. Crowder, anything else you'd like to add? You're good. Okay, Select Board, raise any other questions or comments from this? Ms. Ayden?
Just, just, as you were crafting the, the minimums and the maximums and the heights and everything else, what were the range of values you considered? Was there one, did you, did you push and pull at, at these things?
So, so we are proposing actually to raise the maximum on, in some of the zones. And we, I think we discussed up to 45 feet in, in the comm zone at one point, but we decided to, to just go up by five feet at this point. Really, we're not changing the number of floors. So the floors stay the same, it's just, it's just how easy it is to, to build three floors, how easy it is to, you know, put the infrastructure into, the air conditioning and all that kind of stuff that, that goes into a building nowadays in, in the, in the height range that, that is now allowed. So, yeah, we did look, we did look at substantially larger, and we decided not, not to go too much larger.
Thank you.
No questions or comments from Select Board? Mr. Wald?
Again, just to clarify, as I understood it reading your report and the article, there are several purposes for doing that, and one again is to encourage not building more boxy buildings and providing upper stories that can be used for multiple purposes. And we also mentioned a solar placement, right? So, I mean, it, it seems to me a five-foot increase is not a terribly drastic thing, but it actually produces a lot more benefit than you expect for an incremental change, if we look at it from that perspective, that is aesthetics plus sustainability. Is that a fair reading of the article?
Thank you. Other questions or comments from Select Board? All right, if we are ready to make a recommendation, Ms. Stein?
I move that the Select Board recommend the May 6, 2013 Annual Town Meeting Article 32 zoning mixed-use center dimensions.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that was unanimous. Okay, that brings us to 33.
Okay, so we'll, we'll go to 33, we're not, we'll leave off 33 for now. 33, this is a, this article was, was requested by town staff, specifically the building commissioner. And what it is, is an attempt to rationalize the permitting of non-conforming properties in business zones, so that unnecessary or duplicate hearings need not be held, and so that non-conforming properties in business zones are treated similarly to the way non-conforming properties in residential zones are treated. I have to read this because it's, I understand what it is, but it's, it's, it's very tongue-tying. So I think Mr. Tucker can say it from memory, but no one else can. So there, there are two ways in which a property can be non-conforming. It can be non-conforming dimensionally, or it can be non-conforming by use. And when, when, when a change is proposed to such a property that is non-conforming in some way, it requires a special permit, even when the non-conformity is not itself being affected. And so this, this creates bureaucracy, it creates slowdowns, and it's not, it's not really necessary. What we're suggesting is that the building commissioner be empowered to grant a permit for a structural alteration of a dimensionally non-conforming building in a business zone, provided that alteration does not exacerbate the non-conformity or create a new one, just as he currently is for non-conforming residences. We passed that five or six years ago, I think. So this avoids an unnecessary special permit hearing. And as part of this enumeration of authority, we're also clarifying that a structural alteration involves the exterior of a building. So if it's interior, it doesn't even come up. For a dimensionally non-conforming building in which no structural alteration is proposed in conjunction with a new or expanded use that is conforming, no special permit would be required, just the site plan review or whatever else is applicable. For a change that would otherwise require hearings before both the planning board and the ZBA, because the use is allowed, but a dimensional non-conformity is proposed or exacerbated, the planning board would hear both the site plan review and the special permit, avoiding competing permit processes, as Town Meeting has approved in a number of other situations in recent years. So the ZBA would still hear proposals in which just a dimensional non-conformity is proposed or exacerbated, or when one non-conforming use changes to another non-conforming use that is similar in character and impact. So we're just trying to reduce the unnecessary workload here, without, without relieving the oversight that, that is necessary. We're just, we're just putting it in the proper place.
Thank you. Makes good sense. Questions or comments from Select Board? Ms. Ayden?
Did you hear from representatives at the ZBA in, in the discussion on this?
We did this a long time ago.
Yeah.
I don't specifically remember whether the representative from the ZBA was there. Do you?
The ZBA was, had an administrative meeting during this period and discussed the zoning articles that were then under development, and they were aware of this. They were also invited to the public hearing, and there's a, a ZBA representative who regularly attends the zoning subcommittee meetings, the meetings of the subcommittee of the planning board that works on zoning, so that they were aware of this all along. These changes were principally requested by the building commissioner as a way of straightening out ways in which the non-conforming regulations don't work now. All, in fact, almost all of these changes were intended to do that. Again, one of those intentions in more than one kind of circumstance is to try and prevent a circumstance arising where you have, in order for someone to get a single zoning permit in order to operate a use, they have to go to two boards. That, that just doesn't make sense, and Town Meeting has been adopting amendments to do away with that for more than 10 years, as we run into them.
Thank you. Ms. Per?
Based on your large archive that's up here, Mr. Tucker, in addition to in your paper files, could you give us an example that, does one come to mind, of something where, you know, in the fairly recent past, I mean, within the last 25 or 30 years, where somebody had to go through this process and this is what ended up happening?
What has happened is that we discovered several things at once as a consequence of having a new and highly competent building commissioner. He was going to require that things go to two boards, he had, or is prepared to if these, these changes are not passed. What we have discovered is, over the years, because most of our centers are, were built long before zoning came about, almost all of the buildings, for instance, in the downtown here are non-conforming dimensionally in one way or another. And a series of building commissioners has, over time, simply ignored that. And unless there was something happening that was creating a new non-conformity, they just didn't pay any attention to that in the process. On the other hand, in residential neighborhoods where everybody is watching things very carefully about what's going on in their, their vicinity, it was almost always the case that any non-conformity required a special permit process in addition to whatever use permit may have been required. And that was why the current provision allowing the building commissioner in three different kinds of instances where no non-conformity is being exacerbated, to make an administrative decision that that, those kinds of things can go ahead, was added about eight or 10 years ago to the bylaw. When our new building commissioner took a look at the situation, well, over here, we've got one practice, and over here, we've got an entirely different practice, that's not fair to everybody. Part of the reason for requesting these amendments was to make the practice continuous across everything. He also, although we don't, we didn't have a specific example of this, he did not want to have situations in the downtown, in the process of trying to apply things fairly, where you had a use that was going in a retail store or something, it was going into a building that was non-conforming and nothing was changing on the exterior of the building, but he was going to have to send them to the ZBA for a special permit because the building was non-conforming. So that, this is an attempt to fix all of those floating bits and pieces that have not been resolved previously.
Thank you. Other questions or comments from Select Board? Ms. Ayden?
Can you comment on how this is going to change the workload of the planning board and the planning department? This is and the planning department and the zoning board of appeals?
Well, it will streamline the process. Unless, if we have circumstances where somebody has to go to two different boards, that's twice as much process, that's twice as many public hearings, twice as many night meetings. If it's all being done by the same board that's issuing the permit for the use, in those instances where you need to have a special permit because something is happening with the non-conformity, then it can be combined into a single hearing and done all at once by that one body. Also, by adding the three criteria under which no such review is required, we are relieving everybody of the work involved in going forward with a special permit on that.
Other questions or comments from select board? Questions or comments from the public? Ms. Keller?
Janet Keller, Precinct 1. I just want to state that I have a lingering concern here with the loosening of the regulations through the byright site plan. Regulations and laws are not for most of us, they're not for the people in this room. They're for the outliers who lack the capacity or the will to conform to good building practices when they're tempted by some extra profit. And so, it's very worrisome to me when we loosen those requirements, and I, that's the main point I'd like to make. Thanks.
Thank you. Other questions or comments from select board? Mr. Crowner or Mr. Tucker?
So, this is not intended to relieve the need for a special permit hearing when that is necessary. It might mean that a different body hears the special permit, but if a special permit is going to be necessary, it's going to be necessary. We're saying that it shouldn't be necessary when there's no significant change. It's just the way the bylaw is written, if it's non-conforming, that automatically means special permit, even if that doesn't make sense. So, I agree. We definitely do not want to loosen the oversight where it's necessary, and I don't think that's what we're doing.
Thank you. All right, the select board ready to make a recommendation on this article? All right, Ms. Stein?
I move that the select board recommend to the May 6, 2013 Annual Town Meeting, Article 33, zoning non-conforming uses and structures.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that is unanimous. Next up, we have 34.
34 is a very simple change to the dimensional table for a single zone, the RF zone, for the purpose of increasing flexibility of interpretation of this zone. The RF zone exists in two places in town. One is on Olympia Drive, as most people know. The other actually is right on campus, on North Pleasant Street. The Newman Center and the two fraternities that are north of that are privately owned and are in our RF zone, which means they could be developed by anyone, if they're not university property. However, the dimensional table for the RF zone is really geared toward the Olympia Drive locations. And so, it doesn't allow a very high intensity use that might be possible on the RF zone that is within the university. We'd like to make it possible for someone to potentially redevelop the University, the North Pleasant Street RF zone into potentially high-density student housing that would conform to what already exists around it in campus. So, we're proposing to add footnote A to the building coverage, lot coverage, and maximum height dimensions for the RF zone only. And again, footnote A allows the special permit granting body, a special permit, to modify those dimensions to conform to the existing neighborhood. In this case, the existing neighborhood on North Pleasant Street is the university, and there are five and six-story buildings, there are new modern buildings all over the place, high lot coverage and so on. It doesn't mean that we want that kind of building on Olympia Drive necessarily, and the permit granting body should not interpret it such. They should be looking at the context of the neighborhood, and the context of the neighborhood there is more moral, so. It's not a blanket cover, it's just allowing flexibility.
Questions or comments from select board?
I just have a technical issue. Does anyone have another copy of 34? I seem to have gotten two 35s and no 34, and I would like to have a 34.
I didn't bring my hard copies, I'm sorry.
These are ones that were on the table tonight.
Oh, they don't give me hard copies on the table.
There you go, you can have an extra one.
No, I'm good.
All right, thank you. I'm sorry to interrupt, but I'd like to have it in front of me while we're talking.
So, bottom line, this is allowing private property on campus to potentially be redeveloped as dense student housing.
Right, this is the holy grail.
This is, it's all good. Okay, questions or comments about this? Anyone, Ms. Hayden?
We've visited a number of fraternities recently for a number of functions and have learned through those events and also just in interacting with the students and fraternities about the general rules that they have for their conduct in our neighborhood. I don't know that all frats and sororities behave that way. I'm wondering if there's some part of this that encourages that type of activity. And I don't know how to be more articulate about that, but I'm really rather impressed with the frats that are right down on fearing with their community service, with their designated driver policies, without which they would get kicked out of their national organization.
So, yeah, it can't address that. But I guess I should clarify, it doesn't, what is allowed in RF is not necessarily a fraternity or sorority. It also allows social dormitories. So, you can imagine a different kind of housing that allows individual rooms or something that a lot of people can live in, not necessarily a fraternity.
So, those are the only places you can put fraternities and sororities, but you could also put other things in those places. Mr. Tucker?
The majority of private student developments now, although not all, the majority include private management, because it is in the interest of the property owner over time to make sure that the property doesn't burn down, doesn't have nightly visits by the police and so forth. So, that is an increasingly standard feature of those kinds of developments. Now, depending on what kind of development it is, that may vary, but that is an increasing feature of these.
Thank you. All right, select board, any other questions or comments about this? Public, any questions or comments about this? All right, Ms. Burr?
Since it's in the mailing that will be in the next town meeting mailing, I'm presuming, we just made the deadline for that on Article 34. Could you characterize for us the two excerpts from the campus master plan? I appreciate it's designated that these circles are for the Newman Area Center, but the red properties versus the brown properties? This is something that people who are not particularly familiar with the campus master plan might be rather surprised by.
There are two maps in the report. The first one, which says UMass Amherst Campus Master Plan and then Newman Center area circled, the brown buildings are existing and the red buildings are proposed as part of the master plan. Then if you turn the page, there is a colored map that has a color code, and the color code corresponds to the key above talking about sort of groupings of different kinds of uses of land. This was included in part because it was a big enough plan to also show Olympia Drive, but also it shows that the area along what is now Mass Ave is shown in yellow, and it is contiguous with the three properties along North Pleasant Street, and yellow is residential. So, this is consistent with the state master plan as well as the town's needs.
Thank you. It was the perfect opportunity to get my jacket, thank you, because it's freezing in here. Okay, other questions or comments about this article? Then, Ms. Stein, would you like to make the motion?
I move that the select board recommend to the May 6, 2013 Annual Town Meeting, Article 34, zoning RF district dimensions.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that is unanimous. And 35?
Okay, so 35 is the final part of our package. It's, this is more strictly extending our form-based design guidelines for our zoning bylaw. This would add a new section to Chapter 9 of the zoning bylaw which deals with non-conforming uses and structures, which, by the way, 33 was also adding significant new language to Chapter 9. This adds a new section to Chapter 9, and it deals with where we want non-conforming buildings to be located on a property. So, when there is an addition or expansion or a new building on a non-conforming property, non-conforming for whatever reason, when it comes in for a special permit, we want it to conform to the front setback range that we are proposing to establish in Article 32. And so, that range is to bring buildings closer to the street, to start creating that streetscape, to create public space, to create a pedestrian way, and to start taking away the tendency to put parking lots in front of buildings. So, that's one part of the dimensional table that we do not want to violate. We want to specifically enforce the front setback requirement for non-conforming buildings. And so, this would apply to non-conforming buildings. Again, 32 would apply to new buildings. This would apply to non-conforming buildings when there's a change or addition to them. I should note, the final paragraph, 9.313, allows for a special permit to waive that requirement in cases where safety or aesthetics dictate that it's not really worth doing or wouldn't really work. So, it's not 100% hard and fast rule. It's, the default is we want you to come closer, but there is an escape valve if necessary.
Thank you. Questions or comments from select board? Ms. Wall?
Just to clarify for the viewing audience and others, this applies only to existing structures, as the word "non-conforming" implies. We're not talking about new construction or anything like that.
Right.
No new development.
Other questions and comments from select board? Questions, comments from the public? Okay, that's an easy one. Ms. Stein?
I move that the select board recommend to the May 6, 2013 Annual Town Meeting, Article 35, zoning locational requirements for non-conforming structures in mixed-use centers.
Second.
Mr. Hayden?
I didn't ask my question because it's well documented in the back of the package there what concerns were raised in the public hearing, so I appreciate that.
Thank you. Further discussion, Ms. Burr?
As it was in the other reports as well, it's just good to hear those highlights. I like to hear those highlights. So, the other comment I was going to make is, should we go ahead and have the secondary vote that reflects what planning board's vote was if Article 32 fails? This is our alternate position on this, is referral, just so we remember. I mean, I don't know where we write that down appropriately for the, you know, our backup plan kind of thing.
Mr. Crowner?
So, I should explain that, just in case people don't realize. This Article 35 refers to the front setback range that we're trying to establish in 32. If it doesn't get established in 32, then it doesn't really make sense to then go ahead with 35.
So, you would be moving to dis-?
Yeah.
Referral, so?
To take it back.
Okay, so, we could probably incorporate that into the motion. So, by incorporation, or referral if 32 fails? Okay. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that is unanimous. All right, so those are the?
Thank you.
Thank you. So, those are the articles from the planning board. We do have a zoning petition article, and we have Mr. Gudera, lead petitioner here, to talk to us about this. Welcome. Introduce yourself for folks at home.
My name's Jerry Gudera. I brought up Article 36 as a citizen petition, I guess it's called. The purpose is pretty simple. I think that the summary, especially the recommendation of the planning board gets to the point. I guess I can provide you with some history about the project. We bought the land from Barry Roberts in January of '08. Along with the Henry Hills Mansion, the former Boys and Girls Club, we developed lots along Gray Street by relocating older homes and fixing them up. And now, we'd like to build new headquarters for Amherst Media on the Main Street lots. And Amherst Media now has the right to do that through either special permit or site plan review, depending on how they go about it. This zoning change would facilitate that.
Questions or comments from select board? Question, Ms. Hayden, are you prepping to make a question?
Well, I was just, I was wondering how best to get at this, but I'm wondering if you can comment, and the planning folks have left, so, oh, maybe we can get a comment on how it would affect that permit for the Amherst Media headquarters.
Okay, sure. No, I mean, the greatest advantage of doing the zoning change, and we're not doing the zoning change just for a purely regulatory exercise here. The zoning change would give them greater flexibility, greater lot coverage, they would be able to build out more on the land. Specifically, what they need is more parking space. There's space available, of course, on Gray Street, and there are other areas, but this would make it easier for them to reach their objective. At the town meeting, Jim Lesko from Amherst Media will talk about why they want that zoning change. But since it's specific to their needs, I just wanted to talk about mostly the zoning change and what it means. And so, that's effectively the big difference, greater lot coverage.
Thank you.
Ms. Wall?
Yeah, just briefly, this is obviously a history that goes back a number of years, and a number of us have watched this very carefully. In fact, it was the beginning of moving of houses to those lots by Mr. Roberts when I was chairing the historical commission that brought out big crowds of the public who were very concerned about that and was ultimately concerned about this area that began the push for local historic districts to regulate inappropriate development. And I think we were generally satisfied, very satisfied, with the way things actually turned out historically. I mean, many people would prefer that whole area to be kept undeveloped, but that wasn't, it was not zoned that way. It wasn't, that wasn't the end result. And the end result has been, I think people find satisfactory. Historically appropriate buildings were moved there, they were placed as far to the north and then the east as possible to keep the viewscape for the historic mansions open. And so, our concern about those two lots was that they would compromise the historic character of that property in general and, just in a physical sense, block the view. I was, I wondered, for example, if there might be problems with spot zoning here, and I looked at the definitions and consulted with town staff, and I was assured that was not the case, because this is being done for the common good and in accordance with general planning principles, so I think that's not an objection. The other thing to, and I'm not making a judgment, I'm just trying to explain the background. The historical commission took this up on a number of occasions this past year, most recently just a week or so ago, and they decided not to take a position. They thought it was sufficiently addressed by planning and others. I think one thing to bear in mind, regardless of whether one is for or against it, is that under the current zoning, and Mr. Gudera knows better than I do, he can put up two buildings on those lots, and there's not a lot of regulation over them except when the district comes in. So, as I understand it, again, correct if I'm wrong, the proposal before us would more likely result in, the intensification of use would allow for an appropriate structure to be built on the north, on the easternmost lot, leaving the second lot to the west, probably open, or at least not developed to the same height, and thereby preserving the view. Is that correct?
The only argument you're going to hear from people really- The only argument you're going to hear from people, really, that I've heard at least, is that people would prefer to have these remain-open vacant lots, and that's just not an option. There's no option C here. Right now, there's only those two residential building lots, as you know. In fact, many people don't know, we actually got an offer at one point when we had it, from investor, real estate investors, that wanted to turn it into two single-family homes and then go before the ZBA, get special permits, and pack it with as many people as possible. And so we turned that down, because we had a longer vision for this. It took us, you know, what, five years to find the right partner, it's Amherst Media. Once we have a structure built as far to the corner of Gray and Main as possible, those lots will be occupied. So it won't be expanded, and we'll actually secure the view of the Hill's House to as much an extent as possible. The question is, how do we go about it? Do we go about it through finding the right partner, which is Amherst Media? It's an invested organization here that's got an interest in being in a good spot and looking good. And I think we're developers with a proven track record of having done that. And that's basically why we think this is a good combination.
Thank you. Other questions or comments from Select Board? Ms. Stein.
I like the buildings you put up on the Gray Street, and very much, but it does really concern me how this new project would maintain a view at all. What would it be, over the parking lot, or what?
Right. I mean, the parking lot would presumably be somewhat sunken, because there's a significant slope up and grade up to the Hill's House. It would be obscured presumably by a hedge. And I say presumably, because this would be the first test case, really, for the Dickinson Historic District, which was created as part of that local historic district study committee. And so it would really be up to the Dickinson Historic District to define the parameters of this building within building code. So, you know, we can't do five stories, because the zoning doesn't allow for that. But we may not, we may have to build it in a certain style that reflects the rest of Gray Street, for example. That's, those are the questions that would be addressed by the local historic district. So the parking lot in particular, the idea right now that we've tossed around with Amherst Media, and by the way, you know, we don't have a signed agreement with Amherst Media to do this. This is just an agreement that we have in place. And either they will buy the lots and build it themselves, or maybe we can arrange something where they will lease them back, like what the folks for the Amherst Cinema did. But the idea is to build the lot, build the building as far to the corner of Gray and Main as possible, and the parking on the other side. And so that would maintain the view. Because once you have a structure covered, then that would maximize the lot coverage right there, so you can't build on top of a parking lot.
Mr. Hayden.
I would just point out that Mr. Gudera's presumption that there would be a hedge shielding the parking lot is predicated on applying current zoning bylaw, which requires it.
Say it again, Aaron?
Edges are required around parking lots, by bylaw, by existing zoning bylaw.
Other questions or comments from Select Board? Mr. Wald.
As I understand it, a parking lot is definitely part of your plan?
Yeah.
It's considered desirable, I imagine, for the reasons of Amherst Media, along with the public transit, but there's, that's pretty much a given, or is there an option that would not involve parking there?
I think that would be negotiated as part of the discussions with the local historic district. If we are able to do the zoning change, we would be allowed to have, if we maximized the usage, more spaces than under the current zoning. We've designed some plans for them based on the current zoning, which would require them to either do a special permit or site plan review. And those have, let's say, I don't know, 15, just to pick a number of spots. The new change would give us 20 spots instead. These are just, I'm just using these as numbers, not really actual spaces.
Other questions or comments from Select Board? All right, let's see if, Mr. Crowner, would you like to come forward and give some comments on Planning Board, and maybe take some questions on planning board position?
So, Planning Board supports this zoning change. I should point out that the proposal actually is a zoning change, it's not a proposal for Amherst Media. It's a proposal for zoning change. And so, so the question is, is BN appropriate for this part of town, for this area on the street? And it was the opinion of the Planning Board that, in fact, it was. It, we very recently did a major rezoning of that area of town. And so there's Business Village Center across the street from it. Farther east along Main Street is more BN zone. BN zone is, allows for, it's a softer village center type zone. It allows some uses of, business uses, retail and so on, that are desirable for nearby neighbors, but it, but it has limitations on time and number of employees in general. So it's, it's a, it's a good buffer for a residential zone and even a business zone. So we think it's a good idea, regardless of who actually uses the property.
Could I just ask follow-up, and might have more follow-ups? When you were originally doing the change zoning a couple of years ago, why didn't the boundary include that at that point?
I wasn't part of Planning Board at that time, so I don't, I don't remember what the reason was. I suspect because, because at the time, the rest of that lot was not developed, and so it was, it was thought of more as, you know, this is a residential area. And we weren't trying to create a business area on that part of Main Street. Now that development has happened there, and it's nice and it's good, and it's, and it's not as threatening as people may have thought, why not? Why not take it the next step and finish it off there, and, you know, you can have something really nice?
Mr. Hayden, then Ms. Wald.
Yeah, I just wanted to recall that the BN zone came into being specifically to respect the properties of that neighborhood, the kind of transition between, you know, the downtown and, you know, the first, in fact, the first residential development in the town of Amherst.
Thank you. Mr. Wald, did you have your hand raised? No, I'm sorry. Ms. Burr.
I just wanted to reiterate something that was stated earlier, associated with some of the history, which is that although it took me a little while to get my head around it, because I'm always talking about having more housing units, I'm actually pleased about the fact that by converting it to BN, that single-family house is not possible there, because, because of the possibilities of what could go wrong, if it became, if those were single-family houses, as opposed to businesses fitting in so nicely along that way and across the area. So it actually seems very logical to me to take away the ability to have those be single-family homes.
Thank you. Mr. Gudera, you had another comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention about the history of the zoning change, because I was, part of that reason that that zoning change took effect, I think it was in '09, was that I started having discussions with the Planning Department here about rezoning our building at 446 Main Street. And we discussed the possibility of adding the two front lots from the Hill's House project to that rezoning as BN initially then, but it was considered politically unpalable, given that we hadn't worked on the project yet at the time, and people didn't know what was going to happen. And the separation of the chopping up of the Hill's land into six lots was already causing a lot of strife. So really, it was just a question of, from what I recall from our discussion of the Planning Department, that it was a question of what makes sense at the time. But again, the idea of the business neighborhood is that it acts as a buffer, as a collar around the Business Village Center. I think it's worked out well in the last few years at the buildings that were affected by those changes. And, you know, we see things like the lumberyard going across the street, and the hot tub, and before that, Wonder Arts. Those were all created after the zoning changes. So it did effectively encourage what we want zoning to do, which is a particular type of development, whether it's housing for students, or in this case, businesses.
Thank you. So this is a real, an entry area to our downtown, and it, I think it sounds like the plan, which is a zoning plan, but a zoning plan that specifically has a development potential attached to it, is a, is a good one, and make for a very positive entry to the downtown, and particularly something that is right next to Emily Dickinson's homestead, so. Other questions or comments from Select Board? Questions or comments from the public? Mr. Greenbaum.
My name is Louis Greenbaum, and I live in precinct number one. I still struggle a little bit, incidentally, with the hearing of the acoustics and the BA system, so if I may possibly have repeated something that I didn't hear, I hope you'll excuse me. The one thing that we have not weighed in our discussion and the evaluation of this proposal is that we are dealing with the historical district. We are dealing with two extraordinarily important properties in the history of the town of Amherst. The Hillses, by the midpoint of the 19th century, were the richest people in Amherst. They built those two magnificent mansions that still sit there. And thanks very largely to the clearing of the lots, you can get some sense of the grandeur, the majesty nearly, certainly the opulence of the architecture, the design, and the ultimate creation of two beautiful houses on a magnificent setting. Don't forget, his house was built on a lot of 2.8 acres. I would like to appeal to the Select Board to not grant the commercial zoning that is being requested. It just so happens that the first buyer of that property took what was nearly three acres and a single lot, and created six lots in its place. That in a historical district is absolutely unprecedented. I don't know of anything like that that ever occurred in the town of Amherst. Five of those were frontage lots. The sixth was actually where the mansion sits today, which no longer has a digress. It's always had a Main Street address, it has now a Gray Street address. But that's less important than what we're prepared to do in order to honor the presence of this great family. They were the people who brought the Industrial Revolution to the town of Amherst. They were extraordinarily generous, not merely as employers, but also as citizens of this town. They helped financially for the founding of the University of Massachusetts, which is now 150 years old, celebrating this year. It has a score, and even more, of benevolent and generous gifts and donations which it made, including utilities and public services for the town of Amherst and its citizens. We have an obligation to remember those people. We have something of a duty to acknowledge their presence by dint of respecting the houses which they had built, which also reminds us, incidentally, of the public-mindedness and the services which they rendered to the entire community. What we did in providing the three frontage lots on Gray Street was to move three historical buildings onto an area which one might almost be tempted to say nowadays fits in beautifully well, almost like those houses that always been there. And that is due, I think, to the success of a whole host of factors. But I think we could live with that. I don't think we can live with the possibility of the erection of a business of whatever sort, and whatever service facilities and parking go with it. That would be a defacing, and I think it would also be a repudiation of what a historical district means to accomplish. And if I may appeal to the Board of Selectmen, largely as the people whom we can favor as assuring, something of the continuity, something of the heritage, something of the history that went on and continues, and our reverence, our respect, as I mentioned before, for these buildings. The Historical Commission, and I was proud to be a member at the time, thought that we had had an excellent solution to the problem of being able to maintain the integrity of the land and the building. And that is to offer a sum of money under CPAC, which was approved by the town meeting, and which the owner, Mr. Gudera, found fit not to accept. I still have the hope that maybe he might be disposed to doing that one day. But if that fails, please do not permit the whole transformation of the use, and therefore the appearance of what remains on the land, the two frontage lots in Main Street, which people enjoy, which become part of the fabric of the enjoyment of one of Amherst's great historical neighborhoods. Please keep in mind that our voting not to permit commercial development does not leave the owner of that land without options. He can erect houses. And he presented before the Historical Commission a schema of houses that I think would fit beautifully on the lot, which would be thoroughly in conformity with the buildings that already exist. And nevertheless, which have the one guarantee, and that is, through the control and through the permission, which is accorded by the local Historical Commission.
Thank you very much.
We have that, and I have faith in that. But I'm afraid if we go ahead with the commercial zoning, we've lost all opportunities of being able to have the retention and the continuity of what you can look at and still admire with pride some of the great historical buildings and monuments of our town.
Thank you very much, Mr. Greenbaum. Is Select Board ready to take a recommendation on this? Ms. Burr.
I wonder if, and I'd, you know, put him on the spot, if Mr. Wald perhaps would feel he could respond to this. Although I'm familiar with the boring aspects of the local historic district in terms of who signs what when, and approves what thing when. He's much more familiar with the actual, you know, what they can do and what they can't do. And I know we've had a number of brief discussions here at this board about people's interest in developing local historic districts, and our indicating to them that it's perhaps not the tool they think they're looking for. On the other hand, I think this particular use is exactly the tool that I was looking for the local historic commission, local historic district commission to handle whether it is a house, or whether it is a development of this nature. So am I interpreting that correctly? I mean, this is, this is the kind of tool I would, we'd been talking about local historic districts being able to impact, as opposed to development or not development.
Right. If I may, I mean, I just should preface this by saying, since I've known Mr. Greenbaum since I came to Amherst, literally, from the first day, and we served in the Historical Commission, we've been through all this, and I understand those concerns, and I've been conflicted about this development of this area since 2008. And, but, you know, one makes what one, the best one can out of the situation. I think we've gotten a pretty good situation, all things considered. It's worked out reasonably well so far. So, this actually came up at some point last time when we were trying to pass a local historic district on the town meeting listserv. Some people were concerned about those two lots specifically, and asked me what could happen. And I gave the answer I think you're referring to, which is basically that, you know, right now it's zoned for a certain use. So the local historic district is an overlay. It doesn't affect use, it affects appearance. So, since the zoning was already in place, the owner is entitled to do what he wants to do. And this is my bottom line, too, that under the current, you know, as Mr. Crowner reminded us quite appropriately, we're not voting on ACTV, Amherst Media. We're voting about a zoning change. So that's one thing. Number two, again, that's about the use. My concern is mostly about the appearance. You know, does it fit the district? And that's where the local historic district comes in. So while the local historic district cannot say that Mr. Gudera cannot build there, because he already has that right. If these were, if this, if this had not been zoned that way, a change in the zoning would be involved also with historic district issues. But right now, they're going to talk about the appearance of that. And so I guess my bottom line is, right now, he can put up anything he wants in those two lots under the current residential zoning. You know, they can be boxy ranch houses, or off-the-shelf two-stories, whatever is allowed by the height there. The proposed rezoning at least holds out, there's no guarantee, but under the proposals we saw, and I think what Mr. Greenbaum was referring to was the proposal for the ACTV building, not residential housing, but Mr. Gudera can correct me, I may not recall correctly. So right now, two things can go, two houses can go there, no matter what. Right, under the change, the likelihood is that one lot will be developed and one left open. In both cases, though, the local historic district would be able to have a say in the appearance of those structures. So I don't, I guess that's a long way around, but the protection- So I don't, I guess that's a long way around, but the protections, I think, are extremely valuable, and I would trust the local historic district commission to make the right decision about whatever goes up there either way.
Select board ready to take a position on this? All right, Ms. Stein would like to make the motion.
I move that the select board recommend to the May 6, 2013 Annual Town Meeting Article 36 zoning petition amend official zoning map to change zoning designation on parcels 14B-250 and 14B-251 from RG to BN.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
I'm not opposed, but I'm going to abstain for the moment. I'd like to look into a little bit more the kinds of businesses that could be built in a local historic district in terms of architecture.
Mr. Wald?
Again, the business is not affected, it's only the form, so.
That's what I'm talking about, the form.
There are the commission, the rules are being developed, there's some general rules that are drafted, but you're not going to get a guarantee 100% about a certain outcome.
All right, I'll just leave it as an abstention for now.
Okay, Mr. Hayden, did you vote?
I did, I voted yes.
You voted yes, okay. So that was four in favor and one abstention, is that correct?
Right.
Okay, very good. All right, moving right along. Thank you, folks, for coming in for that. So now we are up to Article 29, the Residential Rental Property Bylaw, and we have Mr. Zomack here to talk to us about this. And we also have Article 38, which is the petition, which is similar, Residential Rental Property Permit, it's called, but we'll talk about that one afterwards to see where they differ. Did you have a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to very briefly introduce this and then have Dave walk through fairly quickly some of the particulars, strongly recommending to the select board that you support Article 29, Residential Rental Property Bylaw. This is the result of a very thorough process, I think, with Safe and Healthy Neighborhoods Working Group I convened a few months back with all kinds of input. You know, no one can claim any process is perfect, but the fact that they worked the problem exhaustively and the product that came out with a set of recommendations at the end really did evolve over time and I think benefited from the input that was generated. I think it's responsive to the many issues that were raised. I think it establishes baseline compliance with life sanitary, life safety and sanitary codes. It increases awareness of the town bylaws on health regulations, on property exteriors. It takes a major step forward on identifying and clarifying parking plans appropriate to each property, and there's a number of others. But it's a complaint-based system, relies on self-inspections primarily, and then our inspector staff is really dealing with complaints that are received. So on that basis, we don't believe the proposal is overly bureaucratic or expensive. There's a relatively modest $100 per property is the estimated fee. That would be, the bylaw gives the select board the authority to set appropriate fees for the administration of this bylaw, and that was a specific recommendation from the working group about establishing $100 per property, not per unit, to pay for the cost of overseeing this. And I think it has the potential to make some positive influence on protecting neighborhoods while also allowing our very important rental market to operate, but in a more effective way and more in harmony with the surrounding neighborhoods. So I turn it over to Dave.
Thank you.
Great. I'm not sure Mr. Muzanti left me much to work with, but given the lateness of the hour and the fact that we have been before you on a couple of different occasions over the last few months for updates and summaries, I will keep my comments very brief. I think Mr. Muzanti covered many of the high points. This has been a months-long process with extensive public input. I would call your attention to the information in the packet that was provided for you last week and will form the basis for the information going out to town meeting members in the second mailing, middle of this week. In that packet, just to call your attention to, there was a summary of the bylaw itself and the process that got us to that, making the recommendation to Mr. Muzanti. There is a draft FAQ, frequently asked questions, that cover a whole host of different things, including many of the comments and concerns that we received from the public throughout our process. In it was a draft of the application. Also included was a draft of the self-certification checklist, as well as the required information that will go to tenants. And then there was a nice one-page informational chart created by a member of the Safe and Healthy Neighborhoods Working Group, Phil Jackson. And I think those documents together present a pretty clear picture of the recommendation that we brought to Mr. Muzanti after getting some feedback, after the working group was done and getting some feedback from town council. The article, Article 29, was tweaked in a few ways to tighten it up and to make sure that when it is reviewed by the Attorney General, that it is in the shape that we want it to be in, and that formed the basis of the text you see in Article 29. So I think I'll stop there. If there are questions, I'm sure that Ms. O'Keefe, who was on the working group with me or Mr. Muzanti, would be happy to answer those questions as best we can.
Thank you very much. And I'll just point out a couple of other points. One is the tenant information sheet and the registration forms, things like that, those are really just illustrative at this point. Those are, those will be tweaked, fine-tuned. If this passes town meeting, then we have about nine months to kind of take care of details like that, but this was to give folks a sense. The other point I wanted to make, oh, I want to make two other points. One is the big change from when this was presented to all of us several weeks ago is that at the meeting the next day, after we had our presentation on Monday night, at the Tuesday night meeting the next day, the working group decided to make very clear in its recommendation that behavior was also a component of the permit and could be a consideration for suspension. And that is addressed in the FAQ, but I want to make sure that it's very clear. It would not be the tenant's behavior per se. The landlord would never be held responsible for the tenant's behavior per se, which would be outside of their actual control, but it, that is the, it is responsive to what the landlord's actions to address any behavioral problems would be. So just like it, the permit concept involves the, I should say, the suspension concept. So the permit just sort of presumes compliance, but the suspension part of the permit is for incidents of egregious nonconformance or lack of good faith effort towards cooperation or obtaining compliance. We had originally been talking about that, just mostly in terms of kind of zoning and health codes, but we added to that behavior issues. So if tenants, for example, were continuously parking inappropriately on the property out of accordance with the approved parking plan, the landlord would need to take steps, take some sort of good faith efforts to be dealing with that. If they just threw up their hands and said, hey, I'm sorry, not my problem, that would be, that would be a lack of good faith effort on the landlord's part. Similarly, if the tenants were to have, say, allowed parties at a property, if the, if those parties, if the landlord took effort to try and address those, maybe that would be hiring private security, maybe it would be sending, you know, registered letters talking about how this is absolutely not appropriate, maybe it would be arranging meetings with the tenants, whatever the good faith efforts would be, that would not have the landlord in any way in danger of having their permit suspended. If they were, in fact, aiding and abetting the problem situation or they were simply ignoring it, then that would be similar to the, to with the building and health code situation, they would be, they would be not cooperating with the code officials, code officials and not making good faith efforts to solve the problem. So we did very specifically affirm that the behavior bylaws, just like the zoning bylaws, are things that the landlords need to be taking positive steps to address. So I wanted to make sure that that was clear, that that was, it's really a pretty significant change from when we talked to you before. And the other thing, just Claire, elaborate a little on Mr. Zomack's point about the parking. We originally had said, kind of very clear, cut and dried, no parking on dirt or grass. And the Attorney General flagged that and said, hmm, you really can't do that. That is, that would be a zoning issue for parking. You cannot do with a bylaw something that you ought to be doing through, you cannot do with a general bylaw something that you should be doing through the zoning bylaw. And so the fact is, we actually already have covered through the change that we made in the spring of 2011 about parking design standards, we're pretty covered by this. So it's possible there's sort of a tiny percentage of properties that will fall through the cracks on this, but the new design standards for any change in parking requires that it not be on dirt or grass anyway. So anything, if you were to have a change in the parking on the property, then already it would be covered by the zoning bylaw. So we think that this captures like 95% of what we were trying to do with our blanket statement, but has the benefit of being able to pass the Attorney General's approval, which otherwise would have been a complete disaster. So those are the big changes. I'll shut up now. Questions or comments from select board? Ms. Brewer?
Well, one of the, one of the positive, and we've talked about this obviously several times, so I won't go over all my previous comments, but I like the fact that you were specific in that there were not a minimum number of parking spaces required, because there certainly are circumstances where, depending on the location, it may make sense that it would be perfectly okay not to have a car per person. So I'm very grateful that we are considering that, because we talk about that sort of thing all the time, but then when we actually go to do things, it sometimes seems like we're still very car-focused. So that's great. One of the things I'm, I have some level of concern about, and I'm not, I know that you perhaps all share at the Safe and Healthy Neighborhoods Working Group what your expectation is, how you plan to express to landlords, because again, we're not talking about, you know, 98% of the landlords, we're talking about that weird 2% that's the problem, in terms of what a good faith effort is. Now, you gave the example of registered letter, I mean, I know they were just examples, registered letters, private security, those seem like really concrete actions. I would hate to see us get into a lawsuit over, well, I told them, I told them not to do that anymore, that was my effort, that's all I have to do. I'm not their parent, I told them not to do it. So I wonder, how do you specify, how can we specify to the landlords what, some examples of what good faith means, so that it's clear we're holding them to a certain standard associated with that, rather than just what they might imagine to be good faith, because those are the people that we already have the problem with? Thank you.
Mr. Zomack?
Sure, I can, I can take a stab at this. So the bylaw doesn't get into the kind of micro of those steps, but it does in Section 12, 13, and 14 outline a very logical, graduated, increasingly clear series of steps that staff would need to take with landlords, whether it be staff from the building department, the health department, the fire department, or in concert, multiple departments with a landlord for various things that might be happening at a particular property. So I think, although we couldn't get into the specifics of you must first phone call, first certified letter or letter, certified letter, it does leave obviously some room for the figure, be it the building commissioner or the health director or the fire chief, to use their discretion, but it does lay out a process by which those steps would happen, including if an inspection was necessary for X, Y, or Z reasons. And then it even has the appeal process laid out in the bylaw as well, if a landlord feels as though they have not been treated fairly. So that's really the way we dealt with those steps. In talking with our building commissioner, for instance, there are multiple ways that good faith efforts can be shown. Some of them have been reported by Mr. Mora to this, to this board, as well as to the town manager in terms of responsiveness about parking. We've had excellent success over the last couple of months with Mr. Mora simply working with landlords on voluntary measures that they can take. Let's get all those cars on the pavement. Let's create a, short of this bylaw, an informal parking plan that shows or installs stones here or a split rail fence here or some hedge to block. So again, those, that discretion will be up to the code enforcement person, but I think there's a way, way to do that that is in line with Section 12, 13, and 14.
Okay. Other questions or comments from select board? Ms. Stein?
Is there an online site for the building and sanitary code? Because health and safety are, you know, dealt with very notoriously, referring to that, and I'd be curious to know what kind of health issues, for example, might...
I'm sure there is. I'd be happy to get that for you. I don't know it off the top of my head, because it's not something I...
I'm just curious, because health and safety, it says health all the time, but, you know, I'd like to be able to know that a landlord or a person who's interested could go and check out what the health standard should be.
Well, I will say that as part of this effort, and we had extensive conversations about this in the working group, all of this, this program, if supported by town meeting and funded, will by and large be online. So there will be a website created, there will be applications created that are all essentially fillable forms, so landlords, owners can go in, fill out those forms, submit them online, see how their application is being processed, where it is in the process of being approved. And then there will also be an online component, of course, with the reference material to links to various codes or other materials that landlords, owners need to, and tenants need to be aware of.
And tenants.
But then there will also be a way for anyone, the general public, to follow the, if there are enforcement actions, to follow those enforcement actions as they proceed. And again, Mr. Mora, Ms. Fetterman have been very upfront with their reports in the last five, six months as we've gotten a better handle on how we're following up on complaints in the field. This will be a complaints-driven system, as Mr. Muzanti said. There will be no mandatory inspections. So really, the work will be upfront in the application process, the reviewing of those applications, the reviewing of the parking plan, and then the issuing of a permit.
Okay. I got a call this week from a tenant, very unhappy with the conditions in the facility in which he's living, and I would like to be able to go and see if his complaints are reasonable by comparing them to whatever the standards are. So I think other people may also have that issue.
Sure. Well, I'd be happy to get you a link to...
That's fine. Thank you.
To the, you want the health.
Right.
Sure.
Because, you know, it's part of the health and safety initiative, so knowing what the health concerns are legitimate would be useful.
Happy to get you a link to that health code, and they could always meet confidentially with staff in the health department as well, if they had questions.
Other questions or comments from select board? Okay. Questions or comments on the article in general?
Denise Barbet, Precinct 9. This doesn't sound like, this is working, I'm assuming.
It is.
Doesn't, yes, sorry?
It is working.
It is, okay, all right. So I have thought a lot about this bylaw, particularly because as a renter, it does affect me, and I think I have finally come to understand... And I think I have finally come to understand what this bylaw is actually about. As I mentioned probably about a month ago, residents have been pressuring Town Hall for help in dealing with increasingly disruptive student behavior. And while I don't know a lot about that, I do know that in the first, probably about...
Can you speak a little louder? Because the people in the back can hear you, and I'm having trouble.
So hold on just one moment. Amherst Media, if you're able to increase the amplification of the speakers in this room, that would be helpful. So they will try and do that, and we can just keep talking, because they need us to be talking so that they can hear that happen. So Ms. Barbara, please continue.
But talk as loud as you can, because truly, the people in the back wouldn't hear.
They could also move up.
Okay. Here we go again. I haven't directly experienced the fun that people in Lincoln Avenue, and Fearing Street, and Main Street experience, though I can hear Main Street, definitely Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. And probably in the last four or five years, we have had increasing herds of students coming up the street, one, two, three, sometimes earlier, sometimes later in the morning. They usually don't disturb me, because I'm usually still awake at those hours, but nonetheless, I'm very much aware of their presence. So this was the impetus for this particular rental bylaw. It interferes with people's quality of life, to the point where some people have simply said, this is enough, this is not what we bargained for, and we're moving out of town. And they sell their house, and they move out of town, which is very unfortunate. So the Safe and Healthy Neighborhoods Working Group, and I want to mention again that that was a group of homeowners. There were no renters, not even a token renter, not even a student on that group. They came up with a solution in the form of this rental regulation by, rental registration bylaw. But to my mind at least, there is a problem. What they were supposed to, what you, they, were supposed to be solving was the disruptive behavior, that people were having to put up with more and more and more in their own neighborhoods. But it appears that the problem you have focused on instead is the condition of rental housing in town, approximately 50% of the dwelling units in town, interior and exterior conditions. Now, I didn't realize that this was a problem. Now, Diana has brought up at least one problem, but I didn't realize that there was a widespread problem with this in town. And as far as I know, there hasn't really been any documentation presented as this being a widespread problem in town. Yes, there are parking complaints. Apparently, a lot of the park, a lot of the complaints that have come to the Building Inspector have to do with parking. Some problems with the condition of apartments, but as far as I know, it is not a widespread problem. And that is very unfortunate. So now, with this new bylaw, we're not talking about the 2% of landlords as being weird, did you say, as Ms. Brewer said? We're talking about the combined total of the 2 weird percent, and the 98 no problem percent, to make it 100% of the landlords and tenants and dwelling units in town that will be affected by these rental regulations. There's, and essentially, what they will have to do is prove why they are not a problem. So rather than us looking at the problems that are already known, that you can see, that you can hear, and that sometimes you can smell as you're driving or walking by, those are the problems we know, but that doesn't matter. That's not what we're looking at. We're going to look at everybody else, presume that they're a problem, and through paperwork, and parking plans, and checklists, and certifications, saying that by God, all your, what was it, the non-porous surfaces are without interruption, we are asking people to prove that they are not the problems, and they're going to have to sign and attest that everything is up to code under pains and penalties of perjury. So essentially, this makes those of us who are not included in the voting members of the working group feel like we are bad, like the landlords are bad, like they are not keeping up their properties, like the tenants are bad, and they're like children, because they don't know what their rights are, and they are not capable of looking after their own health, safety, and welfare. And in the meantime, homeowners, who may be in need of having their own health, safety, and welfare looked at just as much as renters and tenants will, will not be subjected to these particular regulations. This is a very unfortunate situation. I know that the working group has worked very hard, and they have presented something that purports to deal with a problem, but unfortunately, I don't think it does. I think it distracts the town from dealing with a real problem, which is a serious one. How do you control this behavior? Nobody's come up with a pretty good solution at this point. And I think people will say, well, they've worked hard, this is better than nothing, but it is not. It is intrusive, it is insulting to people who not only, who are adults...
Could I interrupt you? Could you tell me what's intrusive about it, as a tenant?
Having somebody come in, and going through, and checking, and saying this, 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 and this. If you're an adult, you don't want to have your mother or your father come in and basically tell you, make sure that your room is clean. This is not something that any homeowner wants to be subjected to. I don't think tenants should be subjected to it, just because they're not paying a mortgage. So that's why I find it to be intrusive, and also insulting, because it says, I'm incapable of looking after my own welfare, and I am certainly quite capable of doing that. And I think you will find that most of the people who rent in town are. And quite frankly, if the town is looking to attract more high-end renters, if they come and they find out, wait a minute, they're going to come in and inspect my place? They're going to go to Northampton. They're not going to go to Amherst.
Thank you very much.
And then there's the, the final thing I want to comment on, is that this is not ready to go, it is not better than nothing, it should be referred back to the committee, and the committee should have a different composition for the second time around to include renters, because the fact that there was not a single renter on the committee, yes, you got input, but no renters were voting members of the committee, that is sort of like taxation without representation, and that shouldn't be happening in Amherst. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So I have to categorically reject Ms. Barbara's categorizing this as a, needing everyone to prove that they are not a problem. That's not at all what this is. This is a set of, really, it's a compilation of existing regulations. The idea that, that the landlord needs to attest to everyone's dwelling, meeting the already defined health and safety codes, there's no change in what those codes are. And really, this is a tenant protection. You could quibble on the details of, of how one determines that your, your dwelling unit does in fact meet the health and safety codes, but I think that as a community, we all want to make sure that they do. And at this point, they don't. This isn't about 2%. This is about an opportunity to address a whole bunch of issues. While it's true that the behavior issues in, in the, the conditions of certain houses is what has brought a lot of this to the forefront, we also have a new inspection staff that is finding horror stories like you can't believe in, in rental housing. So when we have situations of illegal apartments, illegal bedrooms, we have, this is, this is a, a system that has been, not had enough attention paid to it up until now. And so this is really an opportunity to try and protect tenant safety, protect neighborhood quality of life, and determine expectations and clarification on those expectations that's going to raise all properties. I think it's a big mistake to think about this as a punishment to anybody. This is no more a punishment to landlords and tenants than our food truck regulations were a punishment to food trucks, or the taxi regulations are a penalty to taxi companies. This is, when, when you reach a certain critical mass of having collective impacts, you need to be able to have, to exert some kind of community control over those, if as a community you decide that that is in fact what you want to do. So we are giving Town Meeting an opportunity to say, okay, are these the kinds of, of controls that we as a community want to have in response to the concerns that have been brought to us? So, so I just need to reframe that a little bit. To the point of not having any tenants on the committee, the, their efforts were made to get students onto the committee, and they failed, and I can't speak to why there weren't any non-student renters on there, but the, the fact that there were no student renters was, was very unfortunate for sure, but, but that was not, that was not by design. Mr. Zomick?
Could I just add also that the committee and many members of the public who were involved in the multiple, multiple meetings we had, including night forums, also gathered information from communities like ours all over the country. So this, the set of bylaws that, the bylaw that is being proposed to Town Meeting has many of the elements of other university and college towns throughout the country. And so it is very much in line with what other communities are, are doing to try to, as you said, bring together health regulations, other regulations under one, the auspices of one program, in this case, one bylaw, and apply them fairly, and, and raise all boats in town. I, I agree with you 100% that this was not about behavior, this was about looking at our housing stock, our rental stock throughout town. And I guess I would challenge anyone to, you know, simply drive around Amherst and take a look. It is, it is not in the best condition, it is not in the condition overall that I think a lot of us would like to see it. So some of it is very good, well-kept, well-maintained, but hopefully, this program will help raise all of that, so that these are better dwelling units for all tenants.
Thank you. And, and just the final point I wanted to make also is that Ms. Barbara mentioned that this is applying different standards to renters than to homeowners, and that's just not true. There's, there's no, there's nothing in here that is specific to renters. Every, every home is supposed to meet all of the health and safety requirements, and as it turns over, as you turn over a, a house when it's sold, that's the only opportunity to make sure that they do. The parking situation, if you were to change your parking situation, and suddenly you were to need to park a bunch more cars in your home, at your home as an owner occupant, the exact same parking rules would apply to you. The only thing that's different is the, you don't need to register your property, that's the only thing that's different. So none of the other, no other specifics are, are at rental properties. Rather than owner occupied, they apply across the boards. Ms. Stein?
I want to make two points. One is that this is a complaint-driven process. In the case of where somebody feels there is, there are issues with a particular property, and the owner has filed the list, the checklist, and signed off on it, and the tenant feels that that's, or a neighbor feels that, that there are things that are wrong, and makes a complaint, that's when things move forward. And I'd also like to read a particular portion, which says, "An owner shall not be found", this is, well, anyway, "An owner shall not be found in violation of the cell certification program if they have been refused access for an inspection by a tenant slash occupant. However, in such instances, the owner shall either provide the town with a signed statement from the tenant slash occupant indicating that inspection was refused, etc., etc." So I don't think this vision of people being forced to, to have an inspection without a reason in the first place, and even under those circumstances, they could deny it. So I just, that struck me when I read this, that, that in fact, tenant would not have to have their property inspected.
And there's also a, a separate provision for long-term tenants having to have that self, have the landlords attest to the status less frequently. So the reality is, we live in a community with a ton of students who are renting properties for the very first time. It is a very unsophisticated rental audience, rental consumer market, that in some cases is being taken terrible advantage of. And so we, as a community, because we, we have a vested interest in it as well, but also just because it's right, are trying to take steps to also protect the tenants in this. Ms. Brewer?
A couple of quick things, building on what you just said about being taken advantage of. That was one of the things I was really pleased to see, that we covered quite clearly, is that when, when, if something does go egregiously bad, it isn't that the tenants are going to end up out on the street, because that, that's something we wanted to avoid, and that was something we've always had some struggles with, associated with the four-person bylaws, that it, it's not the tenant's fault that six people live there, it's the landlord's fault, in many cases. Okay?
Especially now, because if this, if this is to pass, then the landlord is attesting that they understand and have made clear, the tenant is receiving the information, saying, guess what, this is the law, this will be enforced. I mean, I, I deal with students all the time, some of them have no idea that this is a bylaw in Amherst, and so...
And they'd have no reason to know, any, you know, even if they were to be really, you know, want to comb through things, it's just not something that would occur. Plus, they see it happening out in the community, so therefore, they wouldn't be concerned about it. I also, and, and again, the, the inspections are not proactive, so to speak. I mean, yes, the landlord's attesting to the condition of the property, but it's not like they're coming in and bugging you to do inspections. So it's a very different feeling. And I also, it, it's probably not worth trying to clarify, who knows what'll show up in the newspaper anyway, but the, the 2% weird thing that was referenced, that I apparently said, is associated with the fact specifically of people, the very small percentage of landlords who seem unclear on the concept associated with good faith efforts, associated with behavior. So it's a very small drill-down percentage of people that I'm talking about. I'm not talking about, because I, I know the, the theory's been thrown around, well, just because of a few bad apples, they're making everyone suffer. And I think for all the reasons that you very clearly elaborated, Mr. Zomick's elaborated, and the conversations we've had all this time, have elaborated on, that's not what we're attempting to do. We're not attempting to put in some big, bad system to deal with three really irritating people, really irritating, weird, whatever we want to call them. It's that we're doing a proactive thing. Given that we know that there are some people who really don't get it, I was just trying to see what teeth we have to make sure that we feel like we have the discretion to be able to say to them, yes, that means you really have to do something. So I was satisfied by that.
And, and at the end of the day, this is not going to solve every problem.
No.
It's not going to create every protection to every tenant, to every neighborhood. This is, this is going to do the best it can to establish kind of a new, a new norm, and, and very clear expectations. All right. Select Board need more information before it takes, takes position. Okay. You want to speak? So does Select Board need more comment on this from folks objecting to it? Mr. Grosskopf, you've been here patiently, so we'll let you speak anyway.
Ben Grosskopf, Town Meeting member in Precinct 9, and just had a question about, Ms. Stein read Section C of, Section 7, about the, how it would be okay for a, a tenant to refuse access to the, to the landlord, but I just was reading Section D about the lease terms actually requiring that access be granted, like that'd be part of the lease that you sign, that you would actually have to grant access to, to the landlord. So I was just wondering, doesn't that, doesn't that section sort of contradict the section that you read from?
So if I might answer that...
I'm still getting a handle on this bylaw.
It doesn't...
I will defer to the people who worked on the Safe and Healthy Committee.
The fact is, we live in a state with great tenant protections, and so we started off with a wish list of things that we would regulate here, that all just kind of disappeared, because you simply can't do that in this state. So no matter what your lease says, you as a tenant can deny access to your landlord. You can. They might not renew your lease, or something like that, but, but a landlord can't enter without your permission, no matter what the wording says.
So C overrides D in this case?
The, the, we can't do anything locally that overrides state law, is the bottom line. So your, your lease can say whatever it wants to say. And that also, that's, that's just an agreement between you and the property owner, you are still protected as a tenant by state law.
So, but, but, but a tenant is presumably going to know more about the lease that they sign than they're going to know about state law?
So it is, you don't have to sign a lease that says that you are agreeing to provide access if you don't want to, but having signed that lease, it's an, it's, it's an understanding between... But having signed that lease, it's an, it's an understanding between the tenant and the landlord. And so, to qualify for a tenant, for a permit as a landlord in Amherst, your lease would have to say that if you use leases, if you don't use leases, not all landlords use leases, then they have to make clear in some kind of a letter that good faith effort is made to allow access as practical or whatever. I can't remember what it says. But as the, as the tenant, you always have the right to oppose that, prohibit that. It's your house. It's your, it's where you live. You don't have to let anybody in that you don't want to.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right. Other public comment? All right. So, actually, before we take a position on this, I think it's important to get the, get the sense of the petition article, because I don't want us to have taken a position on one precluding the other. So, if the petitioners could come forward and give us an idea of how your article is different from this and what the status of it is now.
This is the overview that will be going out, two right here. It'll be going out within seconds. We are in, so...
Same page. Okay. Sure. Thank you. Ms. King?
So, I'm Marianne Adams for town meeting rep from Precinct 10. I guess I should put my teacher voice on, right, to try to get the folks behind me? They will be waving to you if they can't hear me, right?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Steve Bloom is the person who submitted this on behalf of the Coalition of Amherst Neighborhoods. Mr. Bloom is unable to be here tonight. He sends his regrets. And since I'm part of the et al., I thought I would come along and represent our position. As you know, as a citizen position, we had to get this in by March 11th while the Shinwig, as we call it, the working group, was still working hard. So, we presented a petition that represented much of what is in the working, is in Article 29, much of what we agree with, although there are some differences that I will go through with you in just a moment. Basically, we strongly endorse Article 29. And so, what remains of 38 will really depend on what happens with 29 in some part, except for the places where we disagree. And then, I think we'll need to make a decision about how to go forward with 39. 38, 29, 38. Thank you. I have to get the numbers correct. So, let me just say, before I kind of go through this sheet, that in a similar discussion with the Finance Committee, we, the Finance Committee concluded that they weren't really certain what there would be of Article 38 in the aftermath of decisions about Article 29. So, in that case, we have agreed to have a meeting prior to the discussion of 38, but after the discussion of 29. And so, that seems to me one reasonable way to avoid the kind of extensive discussions of ifs and thens, which is very hard to evaluate at this point. So, what I tried to point out, what we tried to point out in this one-page overview to go with the mailings, is that we agree with the working group that a rental permit requirement for landlords is one of many tools, not the only tool, to just, to deal with the kinds of problems that we've all been talking about, this Ms. Barberette was talking about, et cetera. In other words, we're not talking about hordes of students on the streets. We're talking about conditions created by the commercial use, and in some cases, abuse of rental property that have, that are destructive of the quality of life within a neighborhood. So, we agree with that very specific focus of the working group, and we will be saving clearly the other problems for another day. So, that we agree with the idea behind a rental permit. This is something that we wanted so much that we put in the petition to be sure there'd be something on the town meeting agenda pending the decisions about 29. We, in an effort to create the least onerous permit system possible, and I think that both the working group and our position is what you might call rental permit light. It's nowhere nearly as demanding as other permit systems are in other municipalities and other college towns. So, that we agree not to have mandatory inspections, as most other jurisdictions require, but instead, only that inspections be complaint-driven, so that they, rather than being punitive, they encourage compliance when violations are found. So, I've outlined the basic areas of agreement that we have with the working group. Now, there are several striking differences. One is that because we were so concerned about the commercial use of student rentals, we did not include all owner-occupied rental units. And that's a very important distinction between the two proposals. So, rather than including all owner-occupied as well as non-owner-occupied rental units, our rental permits cover non-owner-occupied, what we see as essentially commercial rental units. I think that our reasoning was that we wanted to start incrementally. And so, rather than affecting the entirety of the rental stock, we thought that we would take a more incremental approach. I think that there are political dimensions to this as well that I won't go into, but I'm just emphasizing the substantive reason why we made that decision. Our research had shown that all the nuisance houses were non-owner-occupied. We had found that owner-occupied one or two rentals were not nuisance houses. Our concerns were about the regulation of nuisance houses, and that's why we went in that direction. The second difference has to do with the fees. We had felt that there was greater parity and fairness in charging by the unit than by the address. In other words, we felt that there was a basic unfairness in someone, by the working group's approach, having two rental units paying essentially the same fee as someone who had 200 units. We know that there are reasons, there are arguments on one side or the other. This is not something that we will live or die on, but it is a difference between the two proposals. And finally, unlike Article 29, we do not take up parking. We felt that parking was a very complicated issue. We felt that it involved non-rental households as well as rental units and commercial rentals. And we felt that we would look forward to another day when the town's parking problems would be addressed by a separate town zoning bylaw. So, those are the three major differences.
Are you planning to amend, move to amend anything in 29 to...
Yeah. My best understanding, and I can only talk about my own plan, I don't, I don't know what everyone will do who is in town meeting, I have no plan to try to amend 29. I think we've had a number of discussions with, with you, with the town manager, with others. There's an interesting discussion at the Finance Committee about some of the political dimensions of issues on which we differ, namely, whether one does an overall approach to all rental units in town in order to get hold of the rental stock, or whether one approaches the non-owner-occupied, essentially, commercial rentals and starts there. There are political dimensions as well as other dimensions. And our understanding was that those of you on the working group would have your own amendments on the ready if you felt that was appropriate in response to the discussion at town meeting. Our purpose is that, our purpose is to have something as a backstop to the working group, and something that is more modest in scope and cuts out some of what we consider to be the more contentious issues. Because what we want is not that one article or another article succeed or fail, what we want is a rental permit. And that, that is the reason for our having the backstop to Article 29.
Okay. So, so it's a backstop. It's not an alternative, because you're saying that you're, you yourself are not looking to move amendments to 29, and you would not be looking to oppose 29 and support 38 instead?
That's not my intention, and I believe that that's not the intention of many people who are the et al.'s within the coalition.
Okay. All right.
But I can't speak for what people might do on their...
For sure, for sure. Okay. So, Select Board, so, so how would you like to deal with this? Do you want to deal with the pros and cons of the elements that are different here? Or do you just want to say, "Like the Finance Committee, we could leave this to a future discussion if 29 fails"? So, process. Ms. Burr? I'd like to touch on the difference in the owner-occupied or not, because I know that was a conversation that we had here briefly, and that I know that you had lots of conversations about. And that's a component that's very important to me personally, that I, in supporting the whole process. So, while I understand the philosophy behind doing it one way, I also appreciate that a lot of this was purely making sure there was space on the agenda, so to speak, on the warrant, to make sure something happened. So, if everything went kerfluey with Safe and Healthy Neighborhoods, there'd be something happening over here. So, I appreciate that it doesn't appear to be attempting to replace, but I think it's worth having a brief conversation associated with the owner-occupied aspect.
Do you want to ask questions about it, or you want, you're looking for a comment on the Safe and Healthy side?
I guess I'm looking, again, for the reiteration on the Safe and Healthy Neighborhoods side. I mean, I think it is a basic philosophical difference, as I've understood how this has unfolded, because, you know, are we looking at our entire rental stock, or are we focusing on what we presume to be based on some gathering of data to be non-owner-occupied? One of the things that I think is a big flaw in the owner-occupied, and what I was concerned about when that was, seemed to possibly be the way Safe and Healthy Neighborhoods was going, is that we know that there are people who will say they occupy a rental that don't, but it's really hard to prove that they're liars. So, if you don't have to have that conversation, then you solve a whole level of problems, because that's a person that's more likely to be a problem landlord in the first place. So, if you had anything to add to that beyond what I remember of this?
So, I would just emphasize that point a little bit more. So, not only is it, is it creating kind of an incentive to pretend that you're an owner-occupied thing, that's not just, that's not just a difference in your, how much paperwork you fill out. That creates a whole big problem-solving process for the building commissioner. So, it takes a great deal of time to try and establish whether or not somebody does live there, and if you're going to now be applying different standards to that. So, so that seems like something we would not want to encourage at all. Furthermore, the, we originally had had an owner-occupied exclusion when we had mandatory inspections, because we decided really, people who owner-occupy their houses are probably not stripping out the smoke detectors and blocking up their egresses and whatever. And so, that, that seemed onerous to be, to be requiring of folks who rent out rooms in their house or whatever. Once we took away the mandatory inspection part of it, we realized that actually, we've left, we're left with something that's, that's not onerous at all. So, even under Article 39, you would still be looking to have them register. The only thing you would not be having them do is fill out the self-certification that their places are safe. And then, they would also not have the permit attached to that. But the, attesting that their units are safe is important, not just for the town, but for the tenant. So, for that permit to go online, so that the tenant can look and see and say, "Wait a minute, I'm, I don't have any smoke detectors down here," or whatever. Or in the case of illegal apartments in somebody's house, that person wouldn't even, they wouldn't even, you know, admit to that if that was the situation. But now, it would be much easier for a neighbor to say, "Actually, see, they've got a, they clearly have, you know, there are a couple of cars here. There's clearly other people living there." If the owner did not get a permit for that and identify that dwelling unit, then there's just no reason, since there's not a high hurdle, there's no reason to lower the hurdle at all for the owner-occupied, because it really, it's the tenant that's put at risk. Furthermore, we did hear very compelling, or I personally found compelling, comment during a public forum, that there is no difference whatsoever in the eyes of the law between an owner-occupied rental unit and one that's not. So, if you're having the, as the owner, as the landlord, or if you're having the biggest possible tenant headaches with your, with your tenant, it doesn't matter if they live in your same house, or if they live in that house down the street that you own. Your, your situation is exactly the same under the eyes of the law, so it didn't seem reasonable to make any kind of a distinction in our regulations. Mr. Zomack, did I miss anything important?
I thought that was very complete. I did, if we wanted to jump to fees for just a second, because that was, that is another clear difference, very, very briefly. Through staff input and a thorough discussion among the working group, really, we came to this, the conclusion that we did about fees, and ultimately, the Select Board will set the fees. But the reason that we, I think, ended up at one fee per property is really, Mr. Mora made this case a number of times, that, again, we took out the inspections. This is really about the application process. Each owner of a property will apply once, whether they have one unit or 450. And so, we're really, it's really all about the cost of, and the staff time to review that application, that parking plan. It doesn't really need to cover the cost of what comes after that, so to speak. So, it's, it really is a fairness issue, and what is the cost to the town of reviewing each and every application and the materials that come with it? So, whether you own one unit here, or a smaller four-unit complex over here, it's one application. And you'll say, "I have five units, and I attest to the same things in Unit 1, 2, 3, and 4."
If I could just add a few points on, on another point of view. As you remember, our basic point is, we want a rental permit that will pass town meeting. And so, I'd just like to make a few points in that connection. One is, we're very aware of people who are deceptive in their claims of owner occupancy. We know perfectly well that they don't live there. We know where they live. We know where their tax records are. We know where they vote. The difficulty was that the zoning bylaws did not allow the kind of access to go in to prove what we already knew as neighbors. So, I don't think that the argument that it is particularly onerous to figure out whether something is owner-occupied or not, I don't think that, that argument has merit, because it's actually quite easy to find that out. What is more difficult is having the access to enforce it when the landlord is claiming to live there in order to crowd more students in. So, I just wanted to make that point. I think that that's not a, okay. A second issue has to do with our wanting to focus on the non-owner-occupied for two reasons. One is because those are the nuisance houses, and that's what our group wants to control. The second issue, I have to say, is political. Town meeting, I believe, is peopled with folks who have owner-occupied rentals. And I was very struck at the fall town meeting, how people were saying, "You can't tell me what I can do with my house." And I can just hear a reprise of that argument in town meeting scuttling this part of the permit. So, I have a political argument there. When it goes to fees, I've noticed, even though Mr. Mora has a very convincing point about the paperwork, that people's basic sense of fairness and profits from their rentals are offended by the disparity of the amount of fees they have to pay in relationship to the number of units that they are, that they are renting. And so, again, I see that as a political issue of fairness, as an argument in town meeting, as well as a substantive issue. These, these really, a lot of this, in our thinking, was strategic to make sure that a rental permit passes.
Okay. Let's not get bogged down in fees, since it's 10 o'clock and...
Ultimately, the fees will be...
Exactly. That's not, that won't be set by the bylaw. So, the Select Board, if the bylaw passes, the Select Board would be charged with setting fees. The recommendation from the building commissioner endorsed by the Safe and Healthy Neighborhoods Group is that it would be $100, and then it would apply equally to all properties. But if this passes, we can argue about that. But if this passes, we can argue about that for months to get that set. So let's not talk about that part anymore. Ms. Brewer?
I'm not talking about the amount, I'm talking about the permits themselves. I want to just make sure everybody's clear on, if one landlord owns five separate single-family houses all over town, they're getting five permits. If one landlord has 200 units on one property, he's getting one permit. But that makes sense, even though on the face of it, it seems like, oh, that poor person who has five single-family homes, oh, that's so cruel that they have to do five separate permits. But they're five very different units versus 200 units that are basically all the same.
And if the permit holder for the 200 units had a unit that was egregiously out of compliance, and they were being egregiously non-cooperative with, they would only lose the ability to rent that unit. They wouldn't have the permit taken away for 200 units. So it does scale that way. Okay. Okay. So the owner occupied thing, there are a lot of different political arguments you could make and counter-make on that. So I think that we should just leave it with, what's the will of Town Meeting? It will either be amended down at Town Meeting to take owner occupied out of it, or it will stay there, and so we'll see. We already talked about fees, parking, so obviously, it's better if we could get a parking component to this than if we can't. But if you're saying that if there's, if people don't like the parking component, then we're still left with something. Let's see, is there anything else then to talk about with this bylaw? Mr. Wild?
I thought there was another comment from Ms. Taub wanted to speak, or another hand of ladies?
Okay. All right. So that was just one other point I wanted to make about the owner occupied thing, which was, I spoke before about unsophisticated tenants, and one, something else that I found compelling at the Safe and Healthy Group was the idea that owners who are looking to rent out rooms in their houses are actually kind of often among the least sophisticated of renters. So like, suddenly, if I were going to start renting out rooms in my house, I wouldn't have any idea what the rules were, like I would if I were investing in a property, you know, it might be expected to have more plans. So some of the property managers said that requiring them to self-certify, which is really the only difference between whether it applies to owner occupies or not, to certify as to the safety standards that their rental unit is also meeting, is a way of educating those landlords as well. So that is helping to bring them into compliance and protecting their tenants. So it all seemed very reasonable. Okay, so basically, everybody, everybody who's not supporting the rental regulation has left, is that true? So is there anything else to argue about now? Okay, so I think we're ready to take a position on 29, and we'll talk about how we deal with 38.
I'm, okay. I move to recommend to the May 6, 2013 Annual Town Meeting, Article 29, Residential Rental Property Bylaw.
Second.
For the discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous, thank you.
Then what do we do, abstain on 38? And then decide based on what happens at Town Meeting?
I don't know, Ms. Brewer?
Well, I mean, it seems like one of the obvious solutions would be to say that we, it's going to be, chances only seems to be logical, although logic in Town Meeting, but you know.
We're at Town.
That, that if 29 passes, that there would be no need to have 38. So the petitioner would ask to have it be dismissed, because obviously, there would be a residential, which may or may not have been amended on the floor. So it's moot if it gets dismissed. And if, and if 29 fails, we could, we could have a backup vote, a backup plan for 20, you know, assuming that 38 gets moved, whether or not we recommend it.
Right, so I think I like what you're saying. So if 29 passes, it doesn't make any difference. If 29 doesn't pass, then we will have learned a lot from why 29 didn't pass. And at that point, we're going to want to have more of a discussion, like, these elements might be the relevant points, there might be different.
Might be something completely different.
Maybe we just have to sort of amend and strike and start again, or whatever. So let's just defer a position on 38, and only take a position if it becomes necessary if 29 fails.
Okay. So we vote to defer?
Yes, sure.
Okay. I move to recommend that the Select Board defer taking a position on can residential rental, which is Article 38, sorry, I did that out of order. Do you want me to repeat it? I move that for the May 6, 2013 Annual Town Meeting, Article 38, petition can residential rental, the Select Board defers making, taking a position at this time.
Second.
For the discussion, Mr. Hayden?
Do you want to be a little more definitive about when the time would be that we would take a position?
No, I don't think so.
If 29 fails.
Right. We've got a lot of space between 29 and 38, unless we move very fast.
Just, as long as we agree on that, I guess, that's fine.
Right, well, I think actually, we should be clear on what is our message to Town Meeting. So they're going to, I don't know if they're going to know it, yeah, they're.
Taking a position until Town Meeting.
Is that we're not choosing between them, it's, I think that, I think the key point that needs to be included is if 29 fails.
Yeah.
Right?
Right, because it isn't the circumstance under which we might find ourselves, in another situation where we say, no matter what happens, we don't want 38 to pass.
No, we're not saying that at all. But that's why I think you just defer taking a position. We don't want to say if 29 fails, it's, that's.
I don't want anybody to have the misconception that we're considering it potentially an alternative to 29. So we're supporting 29, and 38 really is only, it's only viable if 29 fails.
Okay, so how do you want to say this? To first, taking a position until Town Meeting, and only if 29 fails?
Yeah, we would, you could say, we will, we will consider, it's way too late for me to wing in this.
We could just say no, we could just vote no, and then change our minds if 29 fails.
Well, that's why I said we just abstain.
You can't abstain, it's a recommend, it's a not recommend, it's a defer.
So what's wrong with leaving it the way I said, to, that the Select Board defers taking a position on the May 6 Annual Town Meeting, Article 38, petition can resident rental until Town Meeting, and only if Article 29 fails?
It's fine.
Second.
I think that gets our sense. Ms. Adams?
Yeah, that's clear.
I was going to suggest that you don't even say anything about 38 until you get there. I mean, the only possibility would be if we were asked to comment on 29 as a petition for 38, and we would speak in support of 29. But the Select Board itself, you are not making a statement about 38 until we count up to 38.
Unless we get into the fact that these are parallel articles, so it will come up in conversation. So we don't want, under the consideration of 29, people are going to say, well, what's going on with 38? The moderator may approve considering them together, whatever, there's going to need to be some distinction made, so the Select Board's position on 38 in relation to ours.
You are supporting 29, and you understand that the Coalition has presented 38 as a backup to 29.
It's all right.
Yes.
It really is okay the way it is, because we supported 29, five to zero, and this is saying exactly where we stand, you know, we're not against 38, but we'll take a position if 29 fails.
Right, because we don't want to go into 38. If 29 fails, we don't want to go into 38 with a position of opposition to 38. But we also don't want to go into it supporting it, because it's not that we're supporting it, we're supporting 29, so we're differing. Okay, we're good, we're good.
We're trying to meet a number of needs. We're trying to put it in a box, because there's a little box we have to fill out here, and we're also trying to put it on a script, and we're also trying to be able to all be clear if we show up at a precinct meeting, and somebody asks us at a precinct meeting, which isn't at Town Meeting, but yet will influence people at Town Meeting.
Right, we want to make sure we're all on the same page, anyway. Mr. Hayden?
It's way too late to even think about asking this question, much less try to get it answered. But, so I'm only going to ask it, so it gets into the minutes. What are we going to do about, what could we possibly do about amendments that we, that might get offered to 29? Yeah, but that's why I want to stop there.
Not now.
But that is going to, I just.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's going to involve a lot of difficulty.
Too much for tonight, too much for now.
Yeah, I don't know what we do with that, it will be determined. Okay, what happened? We've got a motion, it's consecutive, we've discussed it, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that is unanimous. Hallelujah, okay. No, I think we are. We're not going, no, I think we are.
We are, we are.
Okay.
Hey, first thing.
By God, I spent so much time on this thing. We're definitely going to do it. You know, we've got, all right, let's keep control here. So we have a lot of things to do next week also, or else we defer it. I mean, if we thought we weren't going to be here until this time next week, then we would change something. All right, so.
So where are we at?
We're not going to be here till next week. So let's assign speakers to these. So we already have Ms. Brewer on 15, Mr. Hayden is going to finish up 16. The zoning ones are, first, let's choose the ones that, so, converted dwellings is just kind of a technicality. Mr. Hayden, as our planning person, you want to do converted dwellings number 30?
Yes.
And Mr. Wild, because you were our Village Center zoning person, would you like to speak to kind of the other ones? So number 33 is different, that's the Building Commissioner's thing about non-conformance. Are you happy, you don't mind doing that? Okay, so then, that's great. Okay, so then Mr. Wild is going to take 31 through 35. Do you mind doing 36? Okay, are folks happy with Mr. Wild doing 36? Okay, groovy. That's Mr. Wild, and so if you don't mind, I'm going to do 29, unless anyone wants to.
No, we're going to wrestle you for it, that would make so much sense at this point, yes.
So 38, I'll just sort of wing 38 also, however, that needs to be dealt with.
Right.
Okay, good, we're done with that. All right, Town Managers report.
Thank you. Very quickly, state budget update, two things. The House of Representatives in Boston began deliberation today on the House proposal on the state budget, including several hundred amendments, which is actually normal. And in their own legislative way, they are dispensing with those amendments throughout this week, and we think by the end of the week, they'll have an adopted budget. It will then go to the Senate, and the Senate will do their thing during the month of May, reconcile in June, give it to the governor, et cetera, et cetera. So that's happening, and there's good information on the Mass Municipal Association website in terms of updates about what the, some of the particulars are on potential amendments, and which ones cities and towns are supporting, et cetera. So I encourage you to read up on that. The second thing legislatively, the transportation finance bill. Different versions have been passed by the House and Senate, both very different from the governors in terms of scope, but we believe similar and positive related to support for regional transit, including the PVTA, and for dedicating serious money to begin to address local road repair needs, in particular, 300 million a year for local so-called Chapter 90 work, which is our local, local streets. So that bill is now, there have been conferees named by both House and Senate that will begin to meet, and we expect that to be conferenced out with a bill that is quite possible to be closer to the Senate version when all is said and done, which we think would be a very positive outcome. So that's state budget. Safe and Healthy Neighborhoods Initiative in the online packet are the latest in a series of code enforcement-related reports from Health Building and, excuse me, Health Building and, yeah, Health and Building, including, you know, kind of outcome-focused, and so you get a sense, looking over the last 12-month period, the number of complaints filed, and the status, and vast majority of which are in the resolved category. And so that's good reading, it's by property address, the nature of the complaint, who responded, and what the current status is of those. So that's an ongoing work in progress, they're all posted online on our Safe and Healthy Neighborhoods webpage on the Town website, and they're on tonight's meeting packet online. Encourage people to inquire and learn about particular properties being addressed one by one. Let's see, staff recognitions. I wanted to mention, we had a number of public safety staff who were called to duty in their mutual aid and other roles related to the Marathon bombing, you know, in the greater Boston area. We had two police officers who were activated. Detective Janet Lopez is in the 747th Military Police Unit, and Officer Johan Lep Madrono's unit was put on standby, but he did not have to respond. But Janet was down in the Boston area for a few days in the immediate aftermath of the bombing on the day of the Marathon. We also had three firefighters, Tom Messer, Bill Messer, and Reed Fraley, who were called into service. The Messer brothers were both on security detail securing the perimeter of the 14-block area, in the immediate area of the bomb site of the explosions, having that be a secure site for the, you know, various, you know, investigations that were going on, forensic and otherwise. And Reed Fraley was also in service on a security detail. So I want to recognize all five of them. So while that event happened in Boston, Watertown, et cetera, there were law enforcement and other public safety resources called upon, state, local, and federal, and our folks were part of that, I want to commend them, commend them for their service on that. Couple other things, recent and upcoming activity. UMass is having another springtime emergency alert system test. We've been noticed on that, it's happening this Wednesday morning. That will include sirens and other, you know, text messaging, it's a test of their notification system, so when you hear those sirens go off, that has caused some alarm, anxiety in the past, it's part of a test. And just, we're trying to get the word out, and this is another way to get the word out. That's happening this Wednesday, the 24th. On the 27th is our Fourth Annual Sustainability Festival on the Town Common, 10 to 4. There's a whole news blast on the website, bring the family, come on down, learn about tree pruning, other sustainability initiatives, it's a growing event, encourage people to come and participate. Let's see, last week, I had the opportunity to meet again with Chancellor Subaswamy, we had a really good, good discussion, frank discussion, on many of the issues we're working on together, very positive discussion. And that's, that's ongoing, and the university is really renewing its effort to be a really positive partner with the town, and there's a number of initiatives. We've had some tremendous outreach on the part of students in particular, any number of events, there's a, there's an award ceremony and reception happening tomorrow night with student government inviting a bunch of us, I know a bunch of us are going to that. There's this online undergraduate training that's being built into the residential life piece about what it's like to be a young new tenant for the first time, and what your rights and responsibilities are as a tenant living in a rental property within a larger community. So I want to applaud the university on that, and help, try to do what we can to help them have that be a success. Also, we have the Founder's Week activities going on all week at the university, including the inauguration of our new chancellor this coming Saturday morning at 11:00 at the Mullins Center, and looking forward to that. And, uh, looking forward to that. Also, had the opportunity to meet with a group of Pakistani local government officials, uh, who are in Massachusetts, uh, with an institute for training and development, uh, overseeing this program. And they were getting exposure to how we do things. Uh, so, we had a great discussion with them, with some staff, about, uh, local government and local government democracy, New England style and Amherst style. It was a good, uh, it was a good meeting that we had. I'll stop there.
Thank you very much. Questions or comments for Mr. Mousante? Um, I'll just note a couple of things. Um, thank you very much for announcing our public safety representatives' involvement in the Boston situation. I think that Amherst can be incredibly proud, knowing that, uh, our folks were there as part of that extraordinary effort. So, uh, thank you to them. The UMass Alert, I appreciate your, um, announcing that. I think it's really important for us to be spreading the word on this, like, more so than ever. I think people by and large are kind of used to the fact that, oh, that happens. They hear it sometimes, people are hearing it for the first time and think it's weird. But now, people are going to be hearing it very differently. Um, and people are, may well be concerned that that is actually a, an incident as opposed to a test. So, the degree to which we can spread the word about the fact that it, that is only a test on Wednesday by UMass's system, I think, is very important. And that's all I have to say about that. All right, uh, where are we? Member reports, liaison representative reports, need-to-know basis. Ms. Brewer?
Two seconds. So, you mentioned the Sustainability Festival. One part of that is the whole gardening three fifty initiative. There was a meeting in this room, our room, you know, I think this is our room, right? It's a gardening meeting, wall-to-wall people. So, that was pretty impressive Thursday night. And then, the other thing was, I went to Craig's Doors, um, open house on Saturday. They had even more food, they had a ridiculous spread of food on Saturday. But, two of the interesting things that came out of that, beyond just the great opportunity to talk to board members and hear from some people there, um, is that they felt, I said, well, you know, what's the big difference between last year and this year with the increased capacity? And they said they felt like they were turning fewer people away, which is obviously a good thing. Um, at least one person stated that they thought that that was probably, you know, kind of a good number in terms of future planning for a different site. Also, um, that they are still continuing to work with various other agencies, and successfully transitioning a number of people into transition, transitional housing, so that there are people who actually, you know, have sufficient income that with some support services, as we've been talking about for a long time, have actually been moved into half of a house. So, that's also very exciting. So, in addition to, you know, finding individual placements, there's also this kind of cocoon effort in the, in the intermediate space. So, lots of different things going on. And the amazing eight-foot cow is going to be down by the, um, installed perhaps the end of the summer.
Mr. Wild has told us about this. This is a fundraising thing for, that's going to be a sculpture outside of carrot shops.
The cow, instead of the frog.
I'd forgotten. I'm sorry, I'd forgotten the cow.
All right.
All right, I can report?
Sure.
All right, I attended the Shetree Public Hearing about saving the hundred-and-thirteen-year-old oak tree, and, uh, bottom line is, the unitar, the vote was to try to save it, and Unitarian Church is going to do its best to help out on that. Went to Personnel Board Meeting on Wednesday. They discussed the non-union employee meeting that had been held. It's important that the job descriptions be complete, um, but the data from that are critical. Some departments do annual performance evaluations, like DPW, some don't. It be, might be worth doing. So, there'd be, one member felt that there should be a paper trail of successes and weaknesses. They thought it would be good if staff successes, um, as you mentioned tonight, be put on the website, because a lot of people don't listen to us. Hard to believe, but, that's a fact. And it would be nice if, you know, the staff accomplishments for this week were listed, and then, it was kind of kept up, so people could even go back and look in a previous week. And I think making, appreciating our, our staff and showing that, so, in a way that more people know about it, would be good, and that came up. There's a revised, um, sexual and other unlawful harassment policy, which is now included in the Personnel Manual. Went to the Board of Health Meeting that night, and there's, um, a lot of effort underway about the medical marijuana being established. And there's going to be, um, probably, we will try to get a, uh, medical marijuana dispensary in Amherst, which is, um, there's, uh, if you want to know, uh, more information about that, you can Google frequently asked questions about the medical marijuana, um, policies in Massachusetts. I did, and it's very helpful. And the other is, and, and Julie Federman, our Health Director, felt that the state was handling this issue very well. She was very reassured about what she was hearing, and there was going to be hearing the next day at North Hampton. The other thing that they're working on is tobacco regulation modifications, particularly about minors smoking. And they are trying to have the policies be, um, the Tobacco Coalition would like the policies to be the same from one community to the next. So, they're going to be working on that. And there will be a public hearing June nineteenth, um, at seven oh five PM on the tobacco regulation modification. And, um, I also attended the Craig's Doors Reception, which was great. And I just made two quick announcements. One is on May eighteenth, um, the survi, at the Survival Center. There will be, uh, a say goodbye to Cheryl Zoll, who has been so wonderful. So, it's come and have a bagel from ten AM to noon. And the other is that this fraternity that a lot of us had supper with, dinner with, Pi Kappa Phi, is having, this is the First Annual Disability Week that they're sponsoring, but they've been active in disability all along, and they're having a Bike-A-Thon, a thirty-six-hour Bike-A-Thon. And I think they've done that maybe thirty-eight times before, um, as part of Push America. But this is to earn money for disability projects.
Thank you.
I'm done.
Yeah, so that's a stationary Bike-A-Thon, so they just, so they, they raise awareness by all being on campus, um, taking turns on these stationary bikes, bicycling in place for thirty-six hours, raising money. And the other thing they're doing is having a, um, shooting beauty film.
Right.
Um, and that's Wednesday night at eight o'clock in Mahar Auditorium. And this is, uh, I think it's.
Eight-thirty.
Is it eight-thirty? I think it's eight o'clock.
Well, that's what I have down, um, on that.
Double check, it's eight or eight-thirty in Mahar Auditorium on campus. And, um, that is going to be, um, I believe it's about shooting, uh, like, a day in the life from the perspective of the disabled person.
I think that's correct.
Is that right? I, um.
People in wheelchairs using cameras is a large part of it.
Right, so that, I'm, I'm hoping to get to that.
Wednesday at eight-thirty.
And it's on the town, front page of the town website, so.
Oh, great, great. All right, uh, other questions or comments from Ms. Stein? All right, other liaison reports. Um, I'll just, nothing you need to know. Well, I just want to get full credit, so you need to know that I did the walk-this-way thing again on Saturday night. Walking around Amherst, wearing many layers, trying to stay warm from ten o'clock to about two o'clock. Saturday was quite a, it was a pretty quiet night, so.
I was going to say, the cold weather is bad for you, but it's good for keeping the stains off.
It's true, and Saturday was an incredibly busy day with the Extravaganja Festival. Um, all the Greek, uh, houses, uh, or chapters had formals that night. There was a big concert at Mullins Center. I think people were very occupied, or very tired, or whatever. So, uh, but it, it went well, and it was, the, the best part of it really is about the, um, the conversations that students were having with each other. So, it's a very kind of different experience for me. So, I was kind of part of a group that was roaming around all the time, checking on all the other groups. But the, the groups of students who were having the conversations with each other, there were a lot of students going out, not so many coming in, um, but, but even less so of both than the previous week. And the reactions that they're getting from each other. And, and we talk a lot about peer influence and how valuable that is. So, um, I, I, I was pretty impressed by it. We didn't, I don't think we diverted anybody to a different route, but we did raise the awareness about, um, about being respectful of neighborhoods, so. Um, that's all I have to report. Uh, okay, so let's do our untimed items and get out.
Should we do the liquor licenses first, while we can still talk?
Sorry, I've lost. Somehow, I managed to lose the.
Your motion sheet?
The motion sheet. But I, I won't know what I'm up to if I can't find my own. I don't know how I did that.
All right, so, why not, I think it's actually better to do the, uh, the Lincoln Pleasant thing before our brains melt, so, or melt further, so.
Yeah, how do you want to do this? Because I didn't expect anyone to be here about this. I didn't expect Historical Commission to come. I expected it to be an internal discussion, so, I mean, obviously, we're public, but, so, I don't know what.
So, this is a technicality, right? Historical Commission has asked us to do this, so, we're doing it. Like, what else is there to need to talk about? So, you, you had told us you wanted us to do it now.
Yes.
And not wait into the future, because it does kick off this whole process of needing to solicit.
Yes.
Um, representatives as, as mandated by state law, from the different boards of professionals. That's the first thing that has to happen. So, i- if we can do it now, if we establish this district now, then Nate Malloy, Senior Planner, who does, who takes care of these behind-the-scenes things for us, can solicit, can make those solicitations together with the same ones from the, um, North Amherst Historic District. So, um, is there more to know than that? So, we're doing it from, timing-wise, we're doing it now to, to maximize, to optimize, uh, that process. And, and because they've asked us to do it, the, the only thing we would do is say no, and that's not really what we do to request like this. So, Mr. Wild?
Yeah, that's basically, and the, the, again, the Dickinson Commission, in some sense, under state law, has the first option at this, but they're meeting on the twenty-ninth, so presumably, the process could start soon thereafter.
So, what do you mean they have first option?
I mean, I think, again, we're back to that state law issue.
Which is back to, why are we doing this? Right, so, under item three of why are we doing this, don't we have to wait for the Dickinson Local Historic Commission to decide if they want to be the study committee? Well, they've already had a conversation about it. They've said it's too soon for them to serve as the study commission for somebody else, because they're still new to this. And they are planning, as far as we know, to vote on the twenty-ninth to not do this. By us doing this today.
Yeah.
What we're doing is we're taking ourselves out of the process, so that we're not holding anything up as we get even busier, closer to town meeting. Because they have to vote that, they have to say, nope, that's right, we don't want to be the study committee. We will have, preferably, already tonight, based on this wonderful packet of information Deborah pulled together for me after I sent her all these separate links, um, that we will, we will set up both, yes, we want a study committee, here's the charge of the study committee, then, we don't have anything else we have to do for a while, because Dickinson has to vote. Yeah, we don't want to serve as the study committee, it's fine for us if the select board does it. And then, immediately, Nate can send out that letter soliciting the professionals for both North Amherst and this committee at the same time. Get that process going, we have to wait thirty days to hear back from those folks. And then, we can actually appoint people. But if we take ourselves, kind of, you know, do our part and then step away, then we're not in the way of making this move along as quickly as it possibly can.
Okay, so, we're all set to do this. So, what would you like, please come forward? And identify yourself.
Jennifer Tao, I'm increasing ten. And I just, uh.
Actually, speak into the microphones, so the people who are still.
I'm delighted that the select board, um, is, you know, following the recommendation of the Historical Commission to form a study committee for the Sunset Pleasant, what will hopefully soon be a local historic district. There's a number, I mean, there's a whole group in the Sunset Pleasant neighborhood that, um, is very supportive of this, in hopes that it can move forward as quickly as possible. And they have actually already solicited, you know, volunteers from the groups that have to be on the study commission. So, I don't know if there's a way to bring those names forward, to try and expedite the process? Because we have been told that the, um, Dickinson Study Committee is not going to want to take this on.
So, the part that's mandated under state law, we can't do anything about. So, actual, isn't it true that the solicitations need to go to the professional organizations of the Architect Society and whatever they are? So, we don't, um, they could communicate with the Architect Society.
They're professional.
Like the architects in the neighborhood that they have to let this society know?
It doesn't matter if they live in the neighborhood or not.
Right, I know.
And so, so, right, as you know. So, the individual, right, she says, they tell their professional, hey, I'll do it, and then they can write their name down, and then that'll make it that much faster if they actually respond. Because if they respond to us in two days, we can start appointing. If they, but if they don't, we have to wait thirty days for them to respond.
Right, they have right of first refusal within thirty days, basically, for the, um.
Right.
Okay, so will, um, guidelines be public? I mean, how would we know what the guidelines are for who needs to let who know that they may be interested?
It's in the state law. It's in, I mean, it, it says which organizations are solicited.
Okay, we have that, okay.
It talks about, this society, you have it already.
This is all in the select board's packet tonight. Yeah, so, our web materials have all this information.
So, I'm just curious, I don't want to take, you know, time. What is kind of the soonest that a committee could be formed, if it has to go to the Dickinson and then come back to you?
Not going to come back to us. So, Dickinson is going to do their vote, they're going to punt on this. And so, then, um, then the vote that we take tonight will take effect.
And then, does it go back to the local historic district, or it goes to staff?
So, this is what we're tying up the letter. So, what happens next, after, so, we're going to do our part now. Dickinson's going to vote on the twenty-ninth, in theory, the very next day, assuming all the other thousands of things he has to do. Nate will send out these solicitation letters. But until he sends them out, the thirty-day clock can't start.
Doesn't start, okay.
So, that's why we're trying to combine the two letters, because we haven't been able to make the time to send out the letter on the North Amherst Study Committee, which we've already done this part of the process for. And the charge, assuming we voted tonight, will be already available online, and individual people from all over can go ahead and fill out citizen activity forms. So, we would be, so, after the, say, for example, some of those agencies probably won't respond at all. So, we probably will have to run out the clock at thirty days. But then, if we have a pool of people to pick from, that'll be great. As opposed to sitting here twiddling our thumbs, because I think two people have applied for North Amherst, even though we've known for months that people want to.
Okay, that's great. But, and then Nate Malloy is the person that that fuddles through.
And then, we do the appointments here eventually.
Right, okay, that's it. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry for the, for the rush on that. But all this is also there, and you've seen all of it before.
Okay, so, Ms. Stein?
I move to, is, that the select board establish a seven-member local historic district study committee for the Lincoln Sunset air, area, perens LHDSC-dash-LSA, and perens per chapter forty-C of the Massachusetts General Laws, for a term to expire June thirtieth, two thousand and fourteen.
S-E-C-O-N-D.
Let's just prolong this.
Second.
Further discussion.
If anybody asks the question, as someone pointed out earlier, originally on our agenda, it said Lincoln Pleasant, we are calling it Lincoln Sunset. It doesn't matter what we call it, but what matters is that it actually has something to do with the actual National Historic Register District. So, that's why it's being called Lincoln Sunset, not Lincoln Pleasant, as you may have seen previous references to it.
Well, it also has a different.
Right, that's why I said not Lincoln Pleasant. We're not calling it that.
I know. I move that the select board.
Did we vote?
Oh.
The wording is different here, though. Oh, I was just going to point out that the wording is different in the title of the motion and the body. And I think Ms. Tao.
The title of the motion doesn't matter. No, it's Lincoln Sunset.
Yeah, I thought I heard Sunset Pleasant, so we should clarify this. Doesn't matter, but.
Lincoln Sunset.
Everyone's going to wait to be recognized, or else we're just devolving into madness, and it's too late for that. Mr. Wild, do you have a recommendation for how to correct the inconsistency?
No, I just, just wanted to note that the title of the, the, the common heading for the motions is Lincoln Pleasant, and the individual motions themselves are Lincoln Sunset.
Okay, and Ms. Brewer? So, so you're saying that the appropriate motion is Lincoln Sunset?
Yeah.
So, I wrote the agenda, who cares what I wrote on the agenda?
And the reason, the reason it's like that is because that's what the Historical Commission said. We have changed it since then, but it was posted that way. So, that's why the heading of the motion is Lincoln Sunset.
Okay, and, the, your, your larger point is, no matter what we call it, that is not in any way defining the boundaries of it. The committee will determine the boundaries, and that they need to be, they need to have a relationship to the national.
Or some geographical.
Some geographical, whatever.
Patient, correct.
Okay, right, so, this is, so, this, we've just spent three minutes talking about nothing, okay.
Right, but for people who are unclear.
Do you vote?
Yes, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous, okay, next.
I move that the select board grant the local historic district study committee for the Lincoln Sunset area. the Lincoln Sunset area special municipal employee status as of April 22nd, 2013.
Second.
No discussion, all in favor, say aye.
We didn't vote on the charge, because Deborah says we don't have to vote on charges.
Okay, good. There we go. So, next up.
Special licenses.
Thank you.
I move that the select board approve an extension for a special wine and malt license approved for concessions at the Fine Arts Center, UMass Amherst, Saturday, April 27th, 2013, from a 10:00 PM to a 12:30 AM closing time. Judith Bardwell, clerk.
Second.
Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous.
I move that the select board approve a special wine and malt license to Elizabeth Bridgewater on behalf of Pioneer Valley Habitat for Humanity for a fundraiser event on the grounds of Cows, Coles, I can't even stalk anymore, Coles Building Supply, 125 Sunderland Road, North Amherst, on Thursday, May 2nd, 2013, from 2:00 PM to 11:00 PM.
Second.
Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous.
I move that the select board approve special wine and malt license to Danielle Larferriere and Greg Wardlaw on behalf of the Amherst College Catering for a cash bar catered event at the King Dorm Quad at Amherst College on Thursday, May 2nd, 2013, from 9:00 PM to 12:00 AM.
Second.
Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous. Okay, so two things we just need to make note of is, Thursday, we have a joint meeting for all of us who can attend. It's not a requirement, but if you can attend, it's a joint meeting in this room with the Finance Committee for the new updated actuarial study for the OPEB report, and so you should have gotten hard copies of the report if you requested it. So that's in this room, 7:00. If you can't be here, don't worry about it. Someone who's there will report back, plus, of course, it will be televised. The other thing is, next Monday, the 29th, at 5:00, is our coffee hour reception honoring Harrison Gregg, so please be here for that.
Spread the word.
If you possibly can be. That's going to be in the bulletin this week. That is all. Does anybody else have anything that needs to be said before next Monday?
I move to adjourn.
And without objection, this meeting adjourns at 10:42. Thank you very much.